Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please recite the invocation?
Thank you, Father, tonight, and thank you for allowing us to gather here. And thank you for our community and those that serve our community. We ask your blessings on them, all the workers that helped make the city what it is, and the people of the city. And we give you thanks and praise for it. Help lead, guide, and direct us into what you know we can be as a community. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Please be seated. Let's begin with the roll call. Alderman Smith.
President.
Alderman Quinn.
President.
Alderman Snyder.
President.
Alderman Saunders.
President.
Alderman Simpson. She will not be attending. If she is, she will be late. Alderman Osborne.
President.
We have a quorum. We may now proceed. First thing on the agenda, Tab 4, Review and Approval of the Minutes of the March 6, 2025 Meeting of the Board of Alderman.
There was a change made to them today. It is on page three.
I'll have to buy that separate.
Yeah. From... Starting at line 114. We did go back into open session after closed session, and the original minutes did not reflect that.
Oh, okay.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from the March 6, 2025 Board of Alderman meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second on the floor to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next thing on agenda will be the mayor's report. I will endeavor to keep it short. On March the 17th, I signed the construction permit application for the water plant upgrade. Option number one for the chlorine deoxide incorporation system, which is to upgrade to our water treatment facility to move towards being able to meet all the current DNR requirements. And hopefully, at the end of this project, we will not be receiving additional requests for additional information from Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Number two, this is just information only. I think that we're going to have to have some consideration at some future meeting as to our providing water to the Clarence Cannon Water District, number one. The reason why I'm bringing this up is during the review of the Black and Beach Study, they imply that the water plant operates at approximately... And George, I'm sure George is going to address this at some point in time, maybe today, maybe tonight. But what was interesting is they indicated that during the time that that study was conducted, the operating hours of the water plant was approximately 32 hours per week until summer, at which time it neared 80 hours per week when the plant supplements the Clarence Cannon Water District, number one. It's aware... We are aware that the cost of water production for the Clarence Cannon Water District is significantly below our costs that we charge anyone within the city of Monroe City. If, in fact, George comes back and is able to confirm that we are incurring additional operating hours, which do cost money, by the way, we may want to reconsider our current contract with them, the cost of the water, up to and including, do we want to continue to provide that service? It needs to be something that's beneficial to the city of Monroe City. We're not positioned to... We're not in a position to... I'm not sure what word I'm looking for, but do it below cost. We're just not in a position to do that. So that concludes my report. Over any questions? Okay, then, moving right along. Next on the agenda will be the city clerk report. Danette?
Mayor, I didn't know. Did you want to go over this now or later?
Well, I would like to do that during your report, when it's appropriate.
All right. Okay, so my report's there for everyone to review. I've been in contact with the BSNA on the software, and they're going to be starting quick. It's going to be a long process, though. It's going to be eight to 10 months to get everything switched over. Been in contact with Leanne Keepers a few times. I've provided them some additional information, and I'll just continue to keep you updated on my report each week or each meeting on that. There is... The mayor and myself have been working on putting bid specs together for sale of real estate that the city owns, and we don't use for any purpose whatsoever. And the mayor can probably talk a little more on that. He went out and he reviewed each property and verified the parcel and got all that information, and that should be in your packet. It's there. Well, actually, I think it's part of the handouts in front of you.
Right. There's a cover letter, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
There's a cover letter on here, and I'll cut the chase. For those of us who recall a review of the... Well, a review of the auditor's report back in 2020. One of the many items that they brought to our attention was the city doesn't have a long-range plan for the sale or development of real estate holding. And the city, at that time, had not documented reasons for the purchase of real estate and had not generally obtained appraisals for the purchase or selling of real estate. So what we have decided to do is to take on that task. And you have a... On your handout, you have a cover letter. And at this point in time, all I would ask you to do is to... Each of you to review that cover letter, then go through this packet. You'll find a copy of what the bid request would look like. Of course, the dates on here are not correct, but this is what the bid request official services would look like. You'll see the ad on the next page that would be representative of what would go in the newspaper. You see a page of all the property that we want reviewed by the board for potential inclusion. And I know very well that Lori will remind me that the developments that may be potential developments that are parts of the property in industrial drive, we may have quite a bit of discussion about those and how those might be used in the future. But there are several other properties that I think are up for discussion. I'm not sure if, when we get to that discussion because of the nature of that, that we may want to have at some point in time, public hearings. And then the very last thing you will see is what that bid... What information the broker's going to be required to submit along with their bid. And so take that whole packet, if you would, please. Review it as you can. And hopefully, what I'd like to do at our next scheduled board meeting is have this on the agenda as an agenda item so we can sit down and talk about it in as great detail as we can. Danette, back to you.
Also in your packet, there's information in there from Mirma about 2025 spring seminar. I have provided this to all the departments, and we will be sending one, two, three, four, five people so far, I believe, for this training from Mirma. The cost is only $20 per person, and it'll be a great opportunity for all of our guys to attend. And then, before I left work tonight, I did find another email from Mirma. They're offering a free training in Telmira on April 1st. And it's more about the insurance side of Mirma regarding liability, claims reporting, investigation reports, things of that nature. And I'd like for Alex to attend that so he could get some more education on that side. And that's on April 1st at no charge.
Do you need a motion or something like that? Go through that. Okay.
There is a budget there for everyone. And I did put a big budget in all the department's mailboxes yesterday, so they have one as well. If you have any questions on that, I'll be happy to try and answer them. It's not the easiest report to follow, but this is all we have to work with with our software.
I think one thing we want to do... Are you done through board? I think, real quickly, I think one thing you're going to want to probably do is sit down and review this in some detail, perhaps at our next admin meeting, or perhaps even public safety. Take a look at some of these labor reporting results for all of these, where we're at right now on labor and overtime. Okay, next thing we have is the city attorney, John Lamott B., who tonight had another meeting to attend. I'm unaware of any authorized speakers. Moving right along to new business under Tab 9. If you recall, a few weeks ago, during our budget discussions, the board asked that we put together an ordinance that addresses... An ordinance establishing fees to outside law enforcement agencies for use of Monroe City officers. This was put together with the assistance whereby the city attorney. You have it in your book. You can read it. And carefully review it. Well, I think this is one of the... I think this is one of the last remaining issues that pertains to the budget meetings and the budget process. We passed the budget back in, I believe, the second week of February, if that's correct. This is about the only things outlined from those budget meetings.
I guess I might have simply answered. I'll go ahead and ask if John reviewed it.
He put this together for us. It was based upon the notes that we had from the budget meetings that we had that were open meetings.
It's pretty straightforward to me.
Adrian, you have any questions?
No, I think it's clear.
This is what you all had in mind? Okay. All right. Well, I'll read Bill number four then. "An ordinance establishing fees to outside law enforcement agencies for use of Monroe City officers be ordained by the Board of Alderman of the City of Monroe City, Missouri, as follows. Section 1. In consideration for the fact that Monroe City currently possesses K-9 capability within the Monroe City Police Department, and that said capabilities are often desired by..." I apologize, folks. Let me turn this thing off. We start over. "Section 1. In consideration for the fact that Monroe City currently possesses K-9 capabilities within the Monroe City Police Department, and that said capabilities are often desired by local law enforcement agencies. Number 1. That in order to offset the costs of the City of Monroe City for assisting local law enforcement agencies, the city will require the following compensation for assisting outside agencies: A. 120% of the full hourly cost of the officer or officers responding with a minimum of a full four-hour charge; B. Mileage incurred by the Monroe City officers to be billed at the IRS mileage rate; C. Any incidental cost. Number 2. That said charges shall be provided to the city clerk within a week of responding so the city clerk can properly bill the appropriate law enforcement agency. Section 2. That this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage."
I'll make a motion to approve. Is that what you need?
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the first reading of Bill number four. Do we have a motion for a second reading? Would you like to wait? I'm sorry. Please speak up.
Don't we need to do a yea or nay on the first round?
No, second round. Whoa. We don't have to do a voice. Do a voice on the second. You do a poll on the second. Second reading.
I yea or nay on the first reading. We hit the motion in the second.
Lori made the motion for the first, took such the first reading of Bill number four in its entirety, and Jason seconded it.
Right.
No, Smith, sorry. Right. And so if there is a second motion to accept Bill number four, then I will do a roll call.
Okay.
Because the first one is just yays and nays.
Right.
On a second reading, you have to do a polling, by the way.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's why I was saying we hadn't actually done the yea or nay.
We haven't done that one yet, no.
That's what you're mean.
So I'll entertain a motion for the second reading.
I'll make a motion for a second reading.
We have a motion on the floor for the second reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a floor on the second, for the second reading of Bill number four.
Roll call vote for Alderman Quinn? Yes. Alderman Saunders? Yes. Alderman Osborne? Yes. Alderman Snyder? Yes. Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Bill number four is accepted and approved. Two questions on that? Okay, next thing we have on new business will be a report from HIC Health Insurance Update.
Passing some information here. Sure, it's just straightforward.
Thank you. I did that with the whole ordinance bill folder this week.
Oh, well, thank you. Making it show better.
Yeah, Alex didn't like it.
Did it stay together?
I wish that was my first time.
Alex put it back together.
Okay, so it was brought to our attention that our health plan that we had kind of proposed and went live 10/1 on October 1st of 2024 was kind of running into some issues, not specifically with our group, but with other groups, not even necessarily in Missouri. But it was brought to our attention, and it made us very, very concerned. So what we're doing today is we kind of want to walk through. I've got some notes on what happened, and I'd like to kind of go over those with you, get your guys' thoughts. And then I've also got competitive proposals from the marketplace. So we went out and got bids from United Healthcare, Anthem, Arlo. And then we actually went back to Excel as well and got another proposal from them with the new stop-loss carrier that's writing on the wallpaper here.
In your packet, you should have that information too.
So in your packet, exactly, you are going to have two... At the back of your packet, there's going to be two packets, or I guess stapled-together sheets here. One of them's from Excel Health Plans, and the other one's from Berger and Montague, which is a law firm. So basically, what's going on is Excel Health Plans is the architect behind our health insurance plan. They're the one who put all the pieces together as far as the stop-loss insurance, the third-party administrator, all of the bells and whistles. So those nice cost containment tools that we have for, like lab work, covered at 100% through Quest Select. Specialty drugs, you know, the high-cost drugs. Those are covered at 100% through script sourcing. We've got surgery benefits. We've got durable medical equipment benefits where employees can, you know, if they call the number on their card, they can access those benefits at no cost. So we have a really, really rich plan. What's going on, though, is Excel Health Plans, like I said, is the architect, the stop-loss insurance company, which is Health Intech, or also known as Stone Mountain Risk. They basically butted heads, and this was in November of 2024, but they've reached a boiling point where they're no longer working together. And we kind of get caught in the crosshairs. So basically, what that means is we have this letter that is from Berger, Montague, and it is a legal notice from Excel Health Plans to Stone Mountain Risk and Health Intech. Del Lockett is the COO of Health Intech and Stone Mountain Risk. Reading through it, more or less, it talks about Stone Mountain Risk is making, you know, they're a publicly traded company in 2023, and they're recording these record profits, 232% return to stockholder dividends there. And they kind of found out why. So Roscommon Insurance Company, they are billing Stone Mountain Risk for $1.1 million. Standard Life Accident Insurance Company, they're getting billed for $2.4 billion. And then we've got an $8.3 billion bill from Iron Shore Indemnity. These aren't to Monroe City. These are stop-loss insurance carriers who more or less... That is money that Stone Mountain Risk needs to pay to the vendors, and they're not distributing the funds. So it's about $10 million, and we don't have any stop-loss claims here in Monroe City. But seeing this, we got this February 27th, and it is super duper concerning because what if something, if we do have a large claim and it does accumulate towards the stop-loss? I don't want to fall in the boat with these other companies that are $10 million in the red. And so as soon as we saw this, we kind of got in contact with you guys. I bid the marketplace, so we've got quotes from, like I said, United Healthcare, Anthem. And then we went out, and Arlo was a really good proposal. They were able to come in very, very comparable to what we have now. The same deductible. So right now, we have a $3,000 deductible. They have a $3,000 deductible. The maximum out-of-pocket does go up a little bit. It's a $6,000 maximum out-of-pocket. And right now, on our current plan with Excel, it's a $3,000 deductible, and that's the end of it. That is the maximum out-of-pocket.
Is our current Excel representative here somewhere?
It sure is. So if you've got those pages out, I'll tell you exactly which one it is. So the one with green and brown on it. So the brown is our current Excel Health Plans, okay? And that's what we sold to you guys. The green is the Arlo, and this would take effect April 1st, 2025. Very, very comparable as far as the rate goes. So right now, for employee-only, we're paying $762.25. Arlo's coming in at $796.71. We have four employees with children dependents on the plan. That rate we're paying right now is $1,425.57. That one looks like it goes down a little bit to $1,286.83. Employee plus family, we have one member who covers their family. That's, right now, it's $19,033.37, so $1,903.37. Arlo's coming in right at $2,287.61, so they're a little bit more expensive on that plan. Total monthly premium, right now, we're at $18,277.15. Arlo's coming in at $18,588.87. So over the course of 12 months, we're talking about $4,000 difference in total premium. That being said, we're very frustrated. Just want to be completely honest with you guys. We've never seen anything like this, where two companies kind of butt up against each other, and now we're no longer working with each other. We did sign a one-year contract with them. So legally, should they stand behind it, yes. But I just don't want any of our members to fall into this boat of claims not getting paid by stop-loss carriers because that's when we really need the insurance to pay, is when it's a large hospital claim. You know, if it's lab work, granted, it does stick that we're not going to have the lab work covered at 100% through Excel. And there are a couple other bells and whistles, like the durable medical equipment we could cover at 100%. We're not going to be able to do that with the Arlo plan. It's going to function more like a standard major medical policy. So it really is going to operate very, very similar, but it doesn't have that disappearing deductible tool. So like I was saying, the surgeries, we can do those at no cost with the Excel plan. High-cost prescription drugs, we can do at no cost. I mean, there was a lot of different things we can do, and that all kind of does go away by moving to Arlo. So just want to be fully upfront there. Employees would lose those benefits. But I think that having a benefit with Arlo is better than thinking we have a great benefit with Excel. And then when the rubber hits the road, they're not going to pay the large claim. And that's kind of what I see with that legal notice that we received on February 27th.
John, I guess one of my concerns is that employees that have already met their deductibles.
100%.
Yeah. So everything would be starting over for them.
Everything would be starting over. And so that was kind of what I wanted to address next, is we do have some employees who have hit that $3,000 deductible. And what we're doing is we're trying to work with a third, who is the third-party administrator, or I say third-party administrator, that's the person who pays the claims out on our current policy. We're getting not... We're having a tough time getting all of the reporting data on, as far as accumulator report. But I was able to get all of our claims data that we had through today. I was able to verify, or it wasn't through today, it was when I met with Danette. There hasn't been any updates since then. But in total premiums, we've allocated, I don't think we've paid that in yet, it was $91,385.75, and our claims were right at about $60,000. They were $59,032.99. We're still $30,000 in the green there. But that's why I wanted to bring this to our attention. Before we have any large stop-loss claims, I think it would be important that we, that we switch to Arlo. Or I got proposals for Anthem and United Healthcare as well, in case you guys wanted to look at the fully insured options available to our group. They were priced out of the market pretty well. Anthem came in really, really high. UHC was pretty high as well. As far as the deductible credit, Arlo doesn't offer a deductible credit. So there is no, with Arlo, hey, we've already met deductible on these votes, so we need you to credit that for them. It would have to come from the city. So that's kind of what I... We're going to need to talk about that.
How many people have waited for the deductible?
I'm trying to get that reported for Mather now, but I know of one right now.
Do you have dollar amounts or anything?
It would be $3,000.
I've just done like, but if someone had their $1,500 deductible.
Then we, yeah, we would pay that.
I just wanted like a total dollar amount.
So I'm trying to get, just so you guys know, I'm trying to get what's called an accumulator report, which shows what each employee has paid in towards their deductible and maximum out-of-pocket. I just haven't received that yet. And I think part of it is because Stone Mountain Risk, and they all kind of met this boiling point. We have never even received an invoice for this plan. Like, we really haven't even taken any.
I called that, yeah.
And so that's why...
I called that months ago. Well, I called Sarah, the lady in the office, and said, hey, I said, we have not paid a single premium yet on our health insurance. That's how it kind of... Oh, God, that's concerning. Don't want to be...
So it really does sound, I mean, not just whatever, but using those issues before, that's what you talked about, like they're not taking notice.
Right. And so in that, we got with Excel again. They did run another proposal with Breck Point, who is the stop-loss insurance carrier there. It's not viable. At face value, it looks good. Their goal, 3,000, came in at $732.49, so you're like, oh, $30... So you're like, oh, $30 less than our current premium. That's fantastic for the same exact plan with all the bells and whistles. It looks pretty, but when we turn to the, let me see what page it is here. It's the second to last page here in the packet on that Excel Health Plan proposal. You'll see designated deductible. Proposal assumes that following individuals will have designated deductibles. So we have one employee who would have $150,000 deductible. We have one employee who would have $125,000 deductible, and then an employee who has a $35,000 deductible. And that's if we wanted to redo this through Excel.
That's the same.
And so that is.
That's not even.
That's exactly why I said, it looks good because they put the premium on there at 730, but in reality, there's $300,000 of liability there that they put in fine print on the back page.
Yeah, because they're not paying, not paying anything.
Well, exactly.
I mean, at that rate.
Well, exactly, and so we saw that, and I didn't even want to bring that in, but I did want you guys to know that we did grab another proposal from them. So we're literally checking all the boxes here, trying to figure out where we can go, try to resolve this. Because, like I said, we found out about this, I want to be fully transparent, that's why we set the meeting to come down, try to come to a resolution.
Okay, sorry, the premiums that we've not paid, okay, right?
Right.
What happens, so if we switch, what do we have to pay?
So we have claims that have come in, and since we haven't paid a premium, we have $59,032.99 and claims that need to get paid out for employees. They've paid their copays, everything's structured that way. We're trying to get an invoice for you guys, so you can pay up till today's date. They can pay those claims out that haven't accumulated towards our stop-loss policy, where we don't need Stone Mountain Risk to come in and save the day on a large claim. And and so that that total is $91,385.75 that we would have allocated towards premium, and we've only had $59,032 in premium.
Why are we just paying?
In claims. Well, that's what I'm saying, but we we need Aether, the third-party administrator of the claims payer, to pay those claims out, and in order to do that, they have to send us an invoice so we can give them the money to pay those claims out. And that's really.
Yeah, can you mention something to the Department of Insurance?
Yep, so we will be going to the Department of Insurance on this. We're trying to make sure we've got all of our notes in a row. We really need, there's two things, we need an invoice from Aether so we can get caught up on our premium through today, and then we also need an official termination of this from Aether, saying that they're no longer gonna do business with us. So they've never even, they've never said, hey, we're not gonna do business with you guys. So Mount Risk is not, but we need a termination letter saying, hey, there's no premium, you know, something that's official, and then we can go to the Department of Labor and say, look, they termed us after they signed a one-year contract saying that they would insure us for 12 months, and they're not doing that. So, and there's there's all these, you know, there's these other groups that have had issues with it. I just don't want that to be one of our groups.
So the providers have not been paid from?
Providers have not been paid, yeah, yeah, yep. And to my knowledge, I don't think any members have gotten bills in the mail on that, or they're not getting balance bill for it.
Yeah.
We need Aether, exactly, yeah, we need Aether to get us an invoice so that we can get these these bills paid, these claims paid, at the provider level.
So I'm just sitting here thinking, okay, so if we end up paying our premiums, and if we end up going with a different policy, how do we know that Excel, that they're gonna provide us a cancellation notice?
Oh, that's what we're working on right now, like, as far as getting them to send us an official termination letter. We we do want that, yeah.
I'm just afraid if we.
Yeah, because you can't start paying somebody else, and then say, hey, you still owe us for.
Exactly.
For your contract, you can pay twice.
Correct.
So is making a change, this is a very serious situation.
It is.
If we if we don't change quickly, and we have some, one of our, one of our associates or employees, whatever characterization you choose to use, have a significant incident, we could be on the hook for a tremendous amount of money.
Right.
However, if we do do something without the benefit of a cancellation notice, is the Missouri, is the Missouri entity that controls insurance companies gonna rescue us from a premium they might demand?
So they wouldn't rescue you guys from a premium, the Department of Insurance would not do that.
You know, this company has basically.
Even though they've done that, and honestly, they might, and and it would be a lawsuit that would go to SMR. I mean, it would be something that wouldn't be resolved in the near future, I know that. It would take, you know, these health insurance companies, I mean.
So what's the most we'd be on the hook for, $90,000?
So right now, we're at at $59,032.99. We've allocated the $91,000 for premium that has not been paid, so that's sitting in account here somewhere. And I'm assuming, yeah, so my worry is, is that if we do have that large claim, I mean, someone could go to the hospital tonight, right? And God forbid, something happens.
Yeah, this doesn't go into effect until the middle of?
4/1, so April 1st, so April 1st, and I.
So let's cut to the chase, we don't have an option.
Right.
It's not a choice that we get to not do. What we have to come come down to is making a determination of which of these options you presented is the option we want to go with.
That's correct.
I'm not sure that we can conclude that discussion in this forum because there are other issues associated with this that we need to discuss in a closed session. This is a contract.
Okay, I, because I, you had a minute, we're gonna have to get John, because we have a one-year contract.
There's some things that we're talking about here, but we don't have all the, we don't have all the information in front of us. We don't.
John, when we go, if if you decide on a new plan, it's another year contract?
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, it would start with 4/1.
Starting with April 1st.
Yeah, go March 1st for 2026.
So I I don't know that I'm fully understanding here, but if we, if we had paid our premiums, then they would have been 90-some thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah.
If we, but as you see it, and we don't have the total, but if the total claims are 50-some thousand dollars that you pay, then can we just pay those claims and then move to a new 4/1?
You have to be a claims payer, like, you can't, not anybody can just go pay claims, so.
I'm actually.
You're sure.
Because we save $4,000 and then move on.
Right, right.
Correct, and Aether, Aether's really the option there, they have the claims because everybody has Aether ID card, the claims go straight to Aether, they get reprocessed through our network discount. So Aether is the answer there. We just need to get the money to Aether, which they need to provide us an invoice in order to do. Our recommendation, and the reason we're out here today, is we need to get, you know, and and I get that it needs to go to a closed session and and all that stuff. So if you need to bring us into that, we're more than happy to to advise and and let you know where, you know, everything that we've shared today in as much detail as you need. But really, what we need, really what needs to happen for the employees of the city of Monroe City is to, yes, put a plan in place for 4/1. The Arlo proposal is the best proposal, it's the closest to your current premiums with the most similar plan design.
Gotcha, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I think that we probably would need you in a closed session for probably about 15 minutes because there's some unanswered questions that I have.
Yeah.
I understand that your comparison of Arlo to the current Excel is the one which is the closest based on the options you 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 presented to us. A question that I don't know, would like to have answered, are the tier one, tier two, and tier three
On prescription.
Very, very similar amongst all of these plans?
Um, between Excel and Arlo? Yeah, so they they pretty much just have a standard stack that they do on the prescription benefit. So Excel Health Plans, any plan you get, it's gonna be $1 generic, $35 tier two, which is brand preferred, and then non-preferred is tier three, 75. Same thing with Arlo, our copay structure is gonna be very similar, doesn't matter.
I think, I think, are you asking about the specific drugs that are covered under which?
Well, I know, being being as young as I am, ours changes every year.
Yeah.
Okay, what's on one tier, well, tier two, tier two, tier three, sometimes, sometimes they just suddenly move, and last year didn't caution, anything this year caution. So having said that, could you do me a favor?
Yeah.
And for for my benefit, I I won't, I won't try to blame on anybody else in the room besides myself. We have 100% co-insurance on the current Excel plan. The one proposing is an 80/20, can you explain the difference?
Yeah, so if you look there, the deductible shows 3,000, 9,000, and then 100% co-insurance on the Excel Health Plan. Like you just said, it's a 3,000, 6,000 with Arlo, and then 80/20. What that actually means is the insurance pays 80% and you pay 20% on any claims that go over 3,000, and then your maximum out-of-pocket is 6,000, meaning that in one year, you can't spend more than $6,000 on our plan on claims. Now, saying that, you can reach $6,000 on a plan and hit the maximum out-of-pocket, and you're still gonna have a $5 copay at the pharmacy when you go to get a generic drug. And that's gonna be standard amongst any healthcare plan.
So the most significant difference between these two plans would be, as you say, would be the maximum out-of-pocket.
Correct.
So it increases from 3,000 to 6,000.
Yes, sir.
So the maximum out-of-pocket on the old plan was nine or three?
It was three, so on that, it reads IND/FAM, individuals on the left, families on the right. So family, family deductible on the other plan was 9,000. Ours is 6,000, and then 12,000 maximum out-of-pocket. And like I said, you had 100% co-insurance on the other one, so the deductible was the max out-of-pocket on the on the Excel Health Plans. On Arlo, there is gonna be cost share once you hit your deductible, until you hit your maximum out-of-pocket.
So once you hit your deductible, do you still have copays for doctor visits?
So once you hit your deductible, you still have copays for doctor's office visits, specialist visits, urgent care, prescription benefits. That's gonna be standard amongst any healthcare plan.
And none of that goes towards the deductible?
Typically, they don't, yeah. Typically, copays don't accumulate towards it.
And the specialty prescription benefit?
Yeah, so.
250 copay per?
And and right now, we do have a $250 copay for specialty medications, if it's not through script sourcing, which we do have a a benefit, we have 1,300 medications that are specialty medications, the highest-cost drugs, and we source those at no cost to the employees' doorstep, and that's on the Excel Health Plans, and so.
It looks like the Excel Health Plan was like, great.
It was, and it's.
Probably why they can't pay their.
And it's a very specialized plan, and and there's really nothing out on the market that's anything like this.
No, like that is.
Probably why they're not in business anymore.
Right.
And it's, that's what I'm saying, they're not business.
Well, and it's less on Excel Health Plans, it's more on this Stone Mountain Risk, they're the reinsurance carrier, you know.
They're more.
When you say you're gonna cover the large claims, and then large claims come in and you don't cover them, I mean, that that's a huge fork in the road, so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Danette, or perhaps Alex, currently an employee only, what is their current weekly deduction for healthcare insurance approximately?
For an individual?
For an individual.
For an individual, monthly, it's about $35, $36.
A month?
Does he pay the rest of that premium?
Yes.
They only pay $35 a month.
Yes.
Okay, you know where I'm going. What would an employee, what what's the EC4 stand for?
So the employee plus child, and then we have, so the 14, the four, and the one, that's our enrollment. So we have 14 employee-only's, which is the EE, four employee plus children, so four employees cover their children.
Okay, so the the employee with children, do you know what their monthly cost currently is?
About 200.
Is that the same whether you have one kid or 10?
Yeah, it is, it's the same premium, four-tier rates.
Yep. Is that the EC4?
Yeah, so.
Okay, and then the EF, the family.
Yes.
Anybody know what that is?
I think it's about 400.
About 400, and that's per month?
Per month.
All right, so that's $200 per pay period. The personal EC4 would be $100 per pay period. And then, oh, golly gee, the individual is like $17, $17.50 per pay period. Now, I'm gonna say something. I had a discussion with one of our department managers of the day, and we were talking about the cost of of insurance. I don't know how most people feel, you know, if I was single, which I am, and on your healthcare plan, and you could offer me a better plan.
You're not better than it.
If only I would pay more than $17.10 a month, do you know what I would say to you? What's it gonna cost me? I want more, I want better, tell me what it's gonna cost. Guys, when I, as an individual, a private person, I was paying $120 a week. Okay, and and that was just an insurance company that we had, and yeah, it was great. But I don't know, let me ask, is anybody here, an employee of the city of Monroe City? Okay, Sergeant, are you, are you single? Are you on, are you on the, you're on the, are you on the $35 more plan?
On the individual plan, yes. Individual plan? Yes.
Now, okay, I'm gonna put you on the spot, Sergeant.
That's fine.
Okay, if I told you I could provide much better, or at some level, a better coverage, somehow, some way, either you're, either your total annual deductible, maximum out-of-pocket, or some other benefit, would you be willing to pay more than $17.50 a pay period?
More likely.
Yeah, you think most people would feel that way?
Yeah, actually, this insurance that we've had in the past four months has been the best I've had in the past four years I've been here.
Good, good. Okay, and that was what I was gonna wanna discuss in closed session, is what options can, what other options can we provide to our employees? And ask them what level of participation they're comfortable with. Because I think we're giving them a, here it is, this is what we've got, take it or leave it. Do we have the ability to do something a little different than that?
We've already got the rates for lower deductibles and things like that through.
Good.
The guys would like to see them, they're, so run this Arlo proposal here. And I don't have the actual SBCs for all these plans, so I don't know the full plan at all, but I mean, you can. So is this, you mind if I?
Yeah.
So I see there's like these.
Yeah.
No, you should.
So this would be a $0 deductible, a $500 deductible.
So that is the, so come actually to the second page here, if the child, we're gonna offer, we can offer. Yeah, yeah. We're over $3,000. Four, 796 stabilized, that's about $30,000. You all have costs in that one to give it a deep. So what you mean, it's kind of marked off. The platinum zero, this is a zero deductible, that's a 500, that's a 1,000, that's a 1,000, 1,500, 3,300, and then you give 20. So if it turns out to be one more time, this is the one that would be. However.
I would assume that it is.
Can I?
Uh, do you all want to go into my system?
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's.
I I can't tell, guys, this is not on you, okay? So don't take it that way. I don't know what the hell I'm looking at. I wanna see something that says, this is the benefit, this is what it costs.
Right.
Is that here?
So I, well, I can draw that up. I, we're gonna draw it up for you right now, but if you guys wanna get back to your meeting, go draw this up.
You guys do that, we'll continue, fair enough?
I'll get my laptop up, yeah, can I just?
Guys, don't take this personally, it's not what it's intended for.
No, 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 what I, this is definitely. So I can build it.
Moving right along, we're gonna let our insurance experts go insure experts, and we're gonna get back to this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move right along with committee reports, planning and zoning, nothing that I'm aware of. Parks and Cemetery, Rodney, you got anything from Parks and Cemetery?
Um, no, they're having a cleanup cemetery, March 29th.
What time?
9, I believe.
9:00 AM?
I got it, frame on the notes.
March, March 29th?
March 29th, rain date's the next day, March 30th.
Oh, March 29th at 9:00 AM, that's a Saturday, correct?
And then the rain day was Sunday.
At the same time?
I believe it's.
Okay, anybody wants to participate in cemetery cleanup, come on down, we'll put you to work with no pay. Okay, anybody wants to participate in cemetery cleanup, come on down, we'll put you to work with no pay.
Yeah.
All right, moving right along, economic development?
Wait, 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 can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Boat ramp out of Route J.
Yeah, I've got that right here, when I get up there.
Okay, well, would you please come forward and have, have a little talk about that? Um, we do not have a low-water ramp at Route J. Uh, the process for putting rock in there in an attempt to try to circumvent the low water, the last time we did, ended up with prop damage on someone in the boat, 'cause we don't have the ability to go down in the water and grade it after we put it in. I would suggest we don't do anything.
How far down is it actually dropping?
Well, the guy backed his boat in and dropped down and axled out, you know, boat trailer, and said he couldn't get out, and the guy with chest waders walked out, picked up the trailer, and he was able to get out, so. I'd say probably three feet maybe, I don't, I don't know. I know in the past, we have put rock in there, but-
Why? Is it gonna come back out? Does the water level come back out? Are you a weather, can you?
He described this perfectly, if we back down there and the brakes go out, we got a trucker, we got a backhoe in the water.
And that's valid. I was kinda concerned, and I, I do understand the prop damage and all that, but my other problem is, is if we've got somebody out there in there, 'cause I, I heard about this, obviously. What if we've got a gentleman out there trying to lift, you know, do it himself, and we found it drowning?
Well, yeah, 'cause I, to that point, I wonder, is there a way that we could?
We have an excavator, we have one of those, I'm trying to think of a way to do it without getting hurt.
In a backhoe. I thought, I was gone the last time they did that, or the only time I remember them doing it, and so I talked to Mike too, he said, you dump it, you push it, you go in about that much water in the backhoe, you can't see nothing, you turn around, you take the backhoe and you shove it in.
What, what's that, what's that, is that called an excavator, uh?
No, I call that a backhoe.
No, could you use an excavator, could you use an excavator, can you dump the rock off the side?
Yeah, you could use a draco, I mean, a mini, but mini can't reach like an excavator if you got a big one.
Yeah, the mini's too small.
Yeah.
Mini hadn't enough reach.
Right. The problem with that, you cannot see.
So, you can't tell if that, uh-
And then hurts the water out.
Back to where, like, do you leave a pile or something that causes those problems?
That's right, and, and the last time, they left a pile, a little pile, and when they pulled out, the props was in, back down there.
Are we gonna create more problems by altering what's there?
This is not responsible for damage to that or whatever.
Yeah, we should probably have that out there, anyway.
I don't know, I'm gonna put a sign out there, this is not a low-water ramp. Owner responsible for any damage.
But I'm wondering if we could, if we, could we have a reliable sign that actually had like a mark that said, hey, this is as low as our, you know, I mean, does that make sense?
Take a dip, check it out.
You can go somewhere swimming here in summer anyway, right?
My wife's leaving Patrick out there at that boat ramp.
Well, why don't you just hop back in?
Yeah, no. Bob Kinder liked to kill me, uh, a long time ago. So, we need to have some talks about that one day. I mean, what, how, I mean, what is the cord, theirs is all concrete, isn't it?
Yeah, and they close theirs at certain points, like, if the lake is so low, some of the ramps are closed.
This is all concrete, but it's at the end of it, when the water gets down, and when they back down.
I like that.
Well, if we closed the ramp-
If I had a Morrissey notice when it was.
But that's what I was wondering, if you had-
If it's closed, then they use it anyway, it's on me.
I mean, we keep a, uh, we keep a, uh, we keep a pretty steady reading of that water level, huh, George, yes, no? No, we don't.
We don't, no.
Probably used, no, we don't, never did, I don't know.
Mark Twain, right, does, but I don't know what's that.
I feel they just entered their own risk, I mean, it's, uh-
And I couldn't tell you how far that drops, I'm just going, this gentleman back there.
Can we put a, a post where the concrete ends and says, this is where the concrete ends, after that, you're on your own?
I'd just send you close it.
Yeah.
I'm afraid if we go in there and put something in there, and we have somebody that gets injured, our insurance company is gonna say, well, that was, you should add this in there, so.
As soon as the water comes back up, you wouldn't see the post you put in, and then somebody goes in there and runs their boat.
And your post, yeah.
We actually just go in next to the ramp when we have to get on there.
And go in the backhoe, that can be our-
Yeah.
Is going in, in the dirt, in the grass?
And, and most of those basically led into the drought that we had last fall and such, right, and that stuff.
Says we're experiencing like forty-three percent drought this year, right?
Oh, really?
I, I know we haven't recovered from the, you know, we got no rain at all for a big portion of the fall and summer last year. Uh, and we got some rain over the winter, but not enough to kill.
Let's go ahead and move along, let's make a decision what we're gonna do with that boat ramp. I recommend the board consider closing the boat ramp.
Just when the water's low, or period?
Close it until the foreseeable future, we're gonna have to have a significant amount of rainfall. It sounds to me like if we dump in rock, we could have an injury to ourselves or our equipment in trying to correct the problem. Uh, even if we did, we could create a problem, they damaged the problem on their boat. If we don't do something, they might cause damage, 'cause the trailer will back off of the edge of the concrete, potentially causing damage. Whether they can hold us responsible for it or not, I don't know, but if we put a sign out there that says the ramp's closed, and they decide to use it, it's on them.
Yeah.
Ramp closed due to low water?
Yeah, ramp closed, low water, I like that, ramp closed, low water. How about a motion? Ramp closed, low water, motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to close the ramp to Route J, we'll put a sign out there that says ramp closed, low water, we have a second?
I'm kind of indifferent, I don't think that it's a bad idea, but who's gonna check it to open it back up when it comes back up? Well, we can use Mark Twain as a gate.
We're really consistent on fixing things later, so let's go do that.
I have to check.
Are Mark Twain's closed right now?
But I need a marker too.
That's what I'm saying, I've gotta have the mark, you know? Do we have markers out there for the little?
We have a marker on the, uh, intake, but that's on a whole nother code.
But it would match, well, you wouldn't see it, but the number would tell you where you were at, but yeah, we wouldn't be able to see it from that spot.
No.
I need to go to back, go down the ramp, take a glance at the marker, oh, it's all right.
We're, we're, we're still all right for like water supply levels, right? I remember at one point we were getting low on that, but we're okay. Yeah, we're okay right now.
Okay, that's for lack of motion, moving on. Economic development?
Uh, we're gonna do a meeting on the thirty-first.
We had a good, um, we had a town hall meeting last night, um, on the prop pay.
I think it was well-attended.
It was very, very well-attended, good conversation, very positive.
You have two more scheduled, is that correct?
One, April sixth.
One more scheduled, excellent. I thought, I found it, uh, very informative.
How many people were able to?
I think about thirty, we said.
Yeah, it was a pretty good crowd. Okay, next thing, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, good conversation, I thought, there were questions, but we talked.
I think it was a good, I think it was a very good, uh, very good, uh, public meeting. Okay, moving right along, administrative committee meeting?
We had a meeting Monday night, and we discussed, uh, getting started on going through applications and holding interviews for, uh, pool manager and administrative assistant downstairs. Uh, we also discussed needing to get started on, uh, creating a pay scale with steps for our employees. Uh, we talked about needing to go over, um, on a regular basis, like yearly or bi-yearly, uh, job descriptions, things like that. About covered it up, Danette was gonna work on, uh, possibly setting up interviews, uh, for the positions that were, have available.
We made progress with that.
Uh, I think we're gonna talk about hiring in a closed session.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, very well, thank you very much, Mr. President of the Board. Next, moving right along, we have, uh, nuisance review board, uh, public safety?
Nothing.
Nothing? Uh, okay, public works? What do you got, Chief?
New listing of properties we're working on.
Awesome, 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 awesome. Thank you, Chief. I like the very last sentence on this page, that's encouraging, don't you think, Chief?
You're just sort of me out.
It shows you're making some progress.
All right, moving right along, public works?
Uh, we did have a public works, uh, committee meeting, and we had, uh, we kind of reviewed some of the outstanding, um, uh, meter access issues that would be going on, and the staff is continuing to work through those, and I think we're making good progress there. Very well, and ended up in a few, um, difficult cases, but so far, progress is pretty good there. Uh, and we-
Well, and they have, we have pictures of the actual-
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the, pictures of actually the things that they're dealing with, um. But I was, I was gonna say, I thought there was something else on our, uh, oh. Did we discuss that, I mean, I, I think it was, George had brought up, we also discussed but didn't resolve yet, um, the question of individual, um, sewer and water charges for like group areas, that was the other thing I was trying to think of.
Yeah.
Um, you know, kind of the questions about whether each individual address, maybe the one way it was phrased would be, uh, sewer and water base charge essentially, uh, versus like one for a location. Kind of the easiest example is, you know, an apartment building that may have one main water meter and several units, uh, then they're gonna pay the, you know, there's a base fee of, of, I don't know what it is now, fifty dollars a water and-
Thirty, twenty, yeah.
Thirty and twenty, yeah, thirty and twenty for the water and sewer, and then, like, the multiple units inside would not have that base fee with the way we're, you know, currently set up in a lot of places. Uh, they do, of course, pay by usage, whether they individually charge their, uh, tenants per usage or not, but, uh, the main usage is all charged, but there is, uh, uh, there's some difference in that, I started, so we talked about that, George mentioned that Ken did, uh, and several other locations have, uh, updated their ordinances or forced that to, like I said, basically each individual unit has to have this each base fees. So, anyway, we discussed that briefly, it kind of tapered it, but we haven't, uh-
Well, and I think, if you're talking about, you know, if nothing else, at least, I don't know what hap- if it has to be an ordinance or what, but going forward, any new construction or remodeling, each unit would need its own meter, and then, of course, would get each, they would have the fifty dollar a month base fee on, on each server, on, for water and sewer. So, that way, you know, somebody doesn't build a eight, eight-unit building, and you're only getting fifty dollar base fee on that, you know, going forward, so.
Yeah, we, we just, I said, it was discussed a little bit, but, uh, no, no conclusion was, uh, right up there to be, uh, but just for the board to, uh, have talked about that, so we could talk about. So, that's all I have for, um, the, uh-
I think so.
Is there another one scheduled, did you have a schedule on, was it the third Thursday?
Uh, I, I think, yes, we have it on, yeah, we have it recurring as a schedule.
Yeah, but I can't tell you any dates, I'm, I was struggling to remember if that was the last meeting or not, but I was, I can't remember. I've been gone so long, I can't, I have no idea, 'cause I was trying to help.
The third Thursday for April is counseling.
Yeah, I think we talked about-
Going the week before.
Going the week before, or when one of these councils moved back, we, we did have a discussion, yeah, I know we talked, talked about waiting on the council meetings, and so if the council been there, 'cause it, it happens, I think, twice this year, where we would have to adjust that, that yield, so that was our, uh, uh, we probably need to leave that little, I know you guys have worked on a calendar, kind of started to add it, I'd say we, uh, uh, maybe do a quick poll of the numbers and kind of confirm that was a little, we have that next thing.
Okay, moving right along.
Thank you.
For Chief, department reports, please. I just need to get you guys to sit closer, you don't have to walk so far.
I've got a few things, first, this is Officer DuPont, uh, she recently graduated last Friday, and she's into her first week, uh, so I wanted you all to be able to see who wasn't we sponsored through the academy, and, uh, I wish we'd looked on FTO. She gets to get into the real learning part now.
Well, welcome aboard, we're glad to have you.
Okay, um, spending a few things on expenditure authorizations. Uh, the majority of all of this is, um, either new uniforms for the officers, uh, we've not replaced those for a couple of years, so that's what the shirts are, and then the others are the duty equipment that we hope off on getting, uh, until Officer DuPont graduated. So, that's gonna be, uh, handcuffs, her body armor, vest carrier.
I thought we had bought the armor not that long ago.
Uh, yes, we did, uh, that was for the officers that we have now. The issue, issue is, uh, significantly smaller than the rest of the guys, we did have to get a special order, uh, for it.
That, that, somehow that seems to make perfect sense, thank you.
Uh, but, so if we hire somebody else, that's higher, so the plans will work for them too.
Makes sense.
Uh, yeah, it does, actually.
Otherwise, it would be awkward.
Well, have you got her outfitted now?
Uh, with the exception of these items here, uh-
Oh, oh.
Yeah, for sure, it's the armor, and then, uh, the plate carrier, which is the vest carriers that are, and then the handcuffs, the rest is-
Have you got a total sheet?
Uh, between all the first stuff, and then, like I said, replacing the, uh, uniforms for our officers, and we currently have to be all of them, it'd be around fourteen hundred.
Okay. And part of that's, uh, uh, officer's, uh, uniform allowance, is that incorrect or correct?
That's correct, we have still leave-
So, part of that was already committed?
Yes, we have still leave about two thousand in that right now.
What do you, what do you need from us, Chief?
It's the approval to go ahead and get that since it's-
Okay, I just entertain a motion to go ahead and, uh, approve the cost for the, the appropriate, uh, uniform of year and other appearances for, uh, Officer DuPont, do we have a motion?
Just, I just verified, you said that's in our budget, uh-
Some, some portion of that is in, definitely in the budget, uh, allowance for uniforms.
Clothing allowance?
That's-
Yes, yeah.
That per person?
Total, the three thousand's total for apartment.
He, he did a dip, but, you know, it's not optional, it's not optional.
Well, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to approve, Chief James's request, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion stacked on the floor, all of you, say aye?
Aye.
All of us say nay. Motion carries, you got your approval, sir?
Okay, thank you. The next thing, uh, this is one I'm really not looking forward to talking about, we have a, uh, vehicle one oh two, just one of the Tahoe's is down, uh, for the same issues as last time. Those corrections are be, are going to be covered under warranty. However, we do have a, uh, an issue with the oil pump, that's gonna be very time and labor intensive. And we're looking at an approximate of twenty-five hundred dollars if they hard make up and run.
One oh two?
How mu- how much, how much total?
The oil pump.
Oil pump?
Twenty-five hundred.
And none of that's warranty?
Yes, there, the AC condenser, um, and then the cam shafts, all lifters are gonna be replaced again, and that will all be covered under- Yes, there, the AC condenser, um, and then the cam shafts, all lifters are gonna be replaced again, and that will all be covered under warranty.
So the only part that's not under warranty is the twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Is, have we gotten bids on that yet, or is that just the ball part?
Well, you took, what happens, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you take it to the dealership, uh, they cover the General Motors warranted parts, and while there, they're gonna replace the oil pump. If I get this, I mean, it's kind of like all or none.
Yeah, once they get, since they've got it torn down, if they tear it down that far...
Exactly, they'll have it torn down, we'll be paying more to try to send some levels after a quick talk.
Will they have a warranty when they get done? I, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, do you think they'll have a warranty when they get done?
Um, on those specific parts of the vehicle.
I guess...
And that's, and that's what's getting us right now, it seems we're done less than six months ago. So that's where that warranty is.
Where are we at, with the active fuel management disabling?
Okay, um, so I was, that was something I came in and I talked with Mayor about this week, I thought that had been next whenever we went through the budget meetings. So I have not moved forward with that, however, we did talk and figured that part out, uh, and I actually, we have good news, uh, we can get that done, uh, directly through the computers in the cars for a much cheaper price than buying, uh, those modules.
Get it actually reprogrammed?
Yes, so we actually...
That's what, that's what he told me.
Yeah, the one that, the one that is now in the shop, that has already been done in the computer, uh, and they did that at kind of at face value right now, so we can see if that is going to work. If it does, then we will pay for it, uh, if it doesn't, then we won't.
Is, is the, is the thought that that contributes to some of the revival problems we've had happen with those?
Yes.
I've heard that with some of them.
Yes, uh, requires, uh, special, special parts within side of the motor that take a lot of beating and damage from that kicking in and out of gear consistently. So there are a lot of parts that have been able to get the active fuel management disabled and it has tremendously helped that, so...
Yeah, because it's switching between four and eight cylinders.
It, it's a, it's a very, it's a very complex process when it does that, and it does it quite frequently. Those off, those have start and stop at the, at the, uh...
It doesn't.
Good, well, you know, I think you're on the right track, and if I, if I, if I was saying anything incorrectly, don't, I had said correctly, but you've got this, uh, one vehicle that they've already done the programming on, you're gonna see how that works, then you're gonna come back and say, hey, that didn't work, or it did, we'll do it for the rest, or the option, come back and revisit what would cost to do, uh, the elimination of the displacement on, displacement on demand and whatever that might be.
Number right off the top of my head, Ken, wasn't that about seventy-five dollars per car? You did it straight through the, you, that's a huge difference.
That's cheap, yeah, because the, the dongle was like three hundred.
It was seventy-five dollars to get or take just a little bit, but it's significantly less than the others.
That's, that's...
Well, that's a permanent fix.
Yes.
Well, that, that wouldn't be hard to get approved. Not, not based on what we're having to do with the, uh, with the, with the issues not covered by warranty, so yeah, let us, let us know what you find out.
Do we, do we need a motion then to approve the, uh, oil pump?
Um...
Okay, I would most be approved, the, the oil pump repair.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the expenditure for oil pump repair on the, on the, uh, on the unit, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion stacked on the floor to approve purchase of the oil pump, all of you, say aye.
Aye.
All post say nay, motion carries, Chief.
I appreciate it.
You're certainly welcome.
Then the last thing is on the bill number four. I would like to highly encourage, uh, council not act on that, get until I have the time to draft some information to you. We've various some things that, uh, that need to be addressed before we do that, we have a lot of already pre-existing standing, uh, mutual aid agreements. And once we go back on that, and breach that, uh, we will be having to redo that with the re-avenancing narrative. And at this point, we assist them for free, they assist us for free. If we start charging, I can almost guarantee you, we will be looking at being charged back for any time we call for assistance.
Who, who do we often call?
Do what?
Who, 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 who do we engage with mutual aid?
Marion County, Ross County, Monroe County.
Okay.
Uh, we do also from time to time get some assistance from Bowling Green, uh, with their K nine, whenever ours is not available, or making also when ours is not available. And at this point, like I said, we, they're not charging us for this, this is something I think just, we should discuss a little further, give you all a little bit more information to make whatever decision you all would like to go forward with, but...
I wasn't aware that the board had approved any mutual aid agreements with those guys. I wasn't, I wasn't aware that this board had viewed, reviewed, or approved in detail. Previous, must be, I've never seen one.
Most of these are same agreements that have been in place for, for years, yeah, decades.
I got, I have a question.
Like I said, as long as we don't act on it at this point, it, we're not breaching, you know, I think, I mean, if we continue on what we have for the time being, as long as we don't act on this, if y'all decide to stay with it, then that's what we'll do. Uh, like I said, I would like to provide you with just a little bit more information before we make that call.
How come you didn't mention this before?
I had never been involved in any of this before, this was a call made about the safety of my officers in the city that I've never been contacted about.
We talked about it openly in the budget meeting.
Talking about charging for the K nine for six months.
Yeah, and I, I said that I was, I was looking into figuring out how the best way would be to do that by reaching out to these other agencies. I, I fully get the purpose of why we're doing this, but, and we need to look at all aspects.
Well, I would agree, I mean, if we're gonna get, if there's some other cities or whatever are gonna slap us with the building...
Well, I don't know how the county would do that, we pay taxes, I pay taxes to go to the county for law enforcement. I would have a real difficult time paying them one penny for anything. Okay, and that's the argument I would make. If we, something was to happen and we only had three officers, they would have to come help us.
Just like with fire.
And then I'd get here for an hour, but they would still come help us eventually, I, I don't know.
An hour's a long time to wait when you have one officer on duty. That's, well...
Do you have a copy of the...
Don't, don't they often show up?
I'll, I'll look them up.
I guess what we talked about during our budget meetings. What else we got going on? Water, George?
Alright, as you mentioned, uh, you've signed the agreement for the, uh, uh, construction permit for the water plant upgrades. And, uh, people service as a whole is gonna do majority of the install of, uh, of, of the upgrades. And, uh, I had actually already put out the bid, uh, one step of the project. It came in, and I was supposed to present the bids to you tonight, but I'm unable to because it went over the ten thousand dollars. And once it goes over ten thousand dollars, you have to do a, a formal bid, and the bid I did was just sending, uh, you know, sending an email to all the distributors, and, uh, they provided me with their bids, and like I said, the bids were over the ten thousand dollars, so I need to get with, uh, Danette, so she can advertise wherever or however we need to proceed with that, so once we get that, we'll get, uh, that's actually a, uh, a permanginate, um, essentially it's a bypass line for, uh, whenever it comes up to the water plant, it's gonna, you know, keep all the junk out of the water plant that normally enters the water plant when we pick the raw water line, so, um, then, uh, I, this, uh, Mayor mentioned earlier about Clarence Cannon, yeah, I will get with him and, and, uh, see, you know, what you need me to do, uh, was it, uh, you know, I, I agree we need to look at their, uh, you know, the, the fee that's charged to them, because it is very low, uh, they do account for a very large quantity of water that they should sell, so, you know, there is some advantage to the bulk, but, uh, yes, we do, we go from, right now, we operate the plant about four days a week to five days, you know, we, we can, we can skip days now where come summer, no, we're doing twelve to sixteen hour days every day, seven days a week.
So, if you're operating a longer, longer, uh, actual hours per day, you, that has to come along with an increase in our chemical cost.
Oh, it does, but yet, there's also a, a huge increase in your revenue that you receive.
A huge increase?
I would say it's a huge increase, yeah.
But we're selling it in the lots.
Say it again?
Are we selling it a lot cheaper than what we're even selling our residents?
Definitely cheaper than we are to our own citizens.
I mean...
Right, yeah, it's, it's like, uh, uh, you know, they, 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 yeah, you know, um, it's, it's when we were gonna get the water from Clarence Cannon, we were gonna pay a very low amount, and then, then the, the city is, would, would raise the rate to sell to their customers.
Some of us are never straight production and distribution teams.
Exactly, yeah. So...
How, how do we evaluate the rate that we charge them?
Uh, it's not been evaluated since I've been here, uh, I've brought it up numerous times, and it's, uh...
Well, I think now is a good time that we'll follow.
Yeah, 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 I, I know the mayor and I don't want, because we also have Marion County, we need to talk, because we sell water, uh, to Marion County also on the, on, on the north end, so, uh, all of that was gonna go away with the Clarence Cannon, because we, Monroe City was gonna pay for a large enough pipe so that they could then supply Cannon and Marion County and cut us totally out, or cut Monroe City totally out, so...
So the increased chemical costs, increased labor and overtime, I'm assuming?
Uh, you guys don't pay overtime.
So...
No, 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 but, at the end of each year, when your management goes back and look at what it costs them to operate our facility, I would be a bit surprised if someone would say that, you know...
Yeah.
It costs more to operate the facility because of these guys.
Yeah, it, it, it could, but, uh, uh, they won't, they, they've done, uh, I believe, just, uh, coal increases on the, ever since I've been here on your, uh, on your contract, is that correct?
Plus a percentage.
The chemical, the chemi- uh, yeah, a, a percent.
Yeah, but the chemicals definitely keep going up, and they're gonna continue to go up.
But the contract price is, uh, uh, cola plus a percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, and each year, we have to pay thirty or forty thousand dollars in additional to that for chemicals.
Right.
So, all I'm saying is this, we, we come up with a rate that, uh, captures our cost plus, and it shouldn't be any different. Someone had to explain to me why that additional volume is beneficial for us to produce. How it offsets some other cost, or somehow provides a benefit to us that warrants charging them significantly less than I pay for for water.
Right, I do not have, uh, the, the financials as far as how much we're charged.
George, this is not on you.
No, no, I'm saying, I, I'd love to be able to explain that, but yeah, it's, uh, um, you know, most, most water plants look at, look at the possibility of being able to sell bulk water like that as a plus. Um, you know, but we can, we can look at it and see if...
We will, we will, we're gonna put together a schedule, we'll have a little meeting, uh, and we'll go, we'll review cost, and we'll take a look, just see if we can't come up with something that seems to be more reasonable and more beneficial to the citizens and taxpayers of Monroe City.
Alright, then that works, and then, uh, last thing is, we're getting ready to, uh, get into disinfection season down at the, uh, wastewater plant. Um, the, uh, oh, I, we were supposed to play, replace all the bulbs in one of the banks of the UV, uh, on an annual basis, and, uh, unfortunately, we didn't have enough money in the budget to, to buy enough bulbs to replace the whole bank, so we're doing half of them. And, uh, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna run the current bulbs out until expiration, or until they, they will no longer meet, uh, uh, meet the E coal I kill that we need, then, then we have a whole nother bank. But, uh, what we like, the best way to do it is keep one bank you're using, get the other, have the other bank new, ready to go, so then, uh... Exactly, yeah, so, um, but I ordered everything today that, uh, that we could within the budget, and, uh, I'm confident that we will have, uh, great E coal I numbers this next year, and, um, other than that, I don't have anything, and plus somebody has something for me.
At this point in time, um, I'd like to, uh, take this a little further, uh, you should have within your handouts, uh, a document that talks about the expenditures and, uh, receipts associated with, uh, the precision pumping account. As much as I don't know why I didn't catch this earlier, I would have probably maybe chose a little different heading, but it's called pig fat expenditures. Bottom line, uh, the revenue, uh, without, with the outstanding invoices, uh, that, that don't work. You wanna, you wanna explain, you wanna explain this?
Yes, so the overall expenses associated up to date on this project are eleven thousand seven hundred twenty dollars sixteen cents. The overall revenues we've received to date is thirty-one thousand nine hundred for a difference of the twenty thousand one seventy-nine eighty-four is what we are ahead, I have invoiced them, uh, for two weeks worth of, uh, charges, and that's still outstanding, and so if you factor that in, the potential revenues would be thirty-four thousand ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Roughly, how long time period is that for?
Since the last part of January. January twenty-fifth, twenty-ninth, yes.
Have we gotten all the bills for the, the enzyme?
Bacteria, yes.
We just got two of those.
Yeah, yeah, there is another one coming, so there will be another one coming.
Is that what I'm saying, I think you said it lasts roughly two weeks?
Yeah, yeah, two weeks, give or take, yeah.
So at that, at that rate, we've only, there's only two deliveries on, that's roughly a month.
There'll be a third delivery, and that's all that we, that's all we're getting billed for, because they did bring three total totes that they didn't charge us for.
Ah, okay.
They, they brought two right at the beginning, and then they brought, there was another one where the pump that we bought from them did not, uh, it was the wrong pump, and the, the setting added all the bacteria, so they didn't charge us for that.
Okay, but then, from here on out, though...
It'll be, it'll be...
Roughly.
About twenty-five hundred dollars a week, yeah.
Yeah. So, about fourteen, fourteen K a month, roughly?
Yeah, it, it all depends upon how, how, how the, the deliveries fall, but...
Right.
Yeah, between two, um, yeah, I, I think we're gonna try to stretch it out to closer two and a half weeks. I mean, because whenever he showed up, there was still, um, we don't know how many gallons for sure, that much of the bottom of the tote, so, uh, we, we could have went a little bit longer.
How's it, how's it progressing currently, weather's warmed up a little bit, you're on a steady paces, how's the stuff looking, how's it?
It's, it's looking better, we're, we're having to get less off of the surface. Um, it's cut, coming in, it, it looks different also, uh, it looks more clear.
So they refine their end of the process?
Yeah, they're, they're working on their end of the process, yes. Um, I'm wait, uh, we turned samples in last Thursday, I'm waiting on results right now, uh, for definitely the, the fats oil increase, that's what I'm most concerned about, is the fats oil increase. Now, the only, uh, other increase, and I, I heard, I'm gonna catch up with the mayor to talk to him a little bit more about this, is that we are pressing more sludge, because there's more food, there, there's more...
So they generate more...
Exactly, yes, so, uh, in the winter time, we were down to, uh, one, uh, one dumpster roughly a month, and, uh, we're gonna be at ten a month right now, but that's where we were last summer, I mean, we, two or three...
Oh, 'cause that varies, that varies, that varies anyway, like you're saying, winter to summer.
Yeah, it, it, it did, yes, so...
So there's not gonna be any additional charges for dumpsters or liners?
From, oh, it, it'll, it'll, it'll be more often, so the, the charges that we're paying for the dumpsters, the, the ten yard dumpster to the, what's the name of that?
Meridian.
Yeah, well, it's not Meridian, it's Eagle Ridge landfill, uh, but yeah, uh, the, the charges to them will... Uh, but yeah, uh, the, the charges to them will increase because we are producing more, more sludge.
Because of this?
I'm not saying it's because of this, I'm just saying that right now we are producing more sludge, but yet it's getting closer to summer. Last year we were doing, uh, one every week, week and a half, just like we are right now. But yes, I would, I would venture to say yes, it sure could be from the, uh, part of it could be from this.
Okay, do we, uh, need to keep track, uh, of any additional costs that are deniable and relative to the continuation of this process? Uh, within your package, you'll see that we do have a, a contract that are, uh, that we executed on January twenty ninth. It basically allows us to, uh, stop quickly, uh, if we choose not to, uh, continue this. It establishes, uh, a cost, uh, per load based upon fifty, fifty eight hundred gallons. Ten cents per gallon. Uh, they provide a certificate of liability insurance that identifies us against incidents or accident. That occurs with their equipment or personnel. Uh, Mike Schneider certainly brought up a lot of good questions relative to, to continue this. I think that, uh, I would like for the board to, uh, I don't know if we can have a, how long we can have a discussion, but. If there's any questions, concerns, now would be a good time to bring them out and discuss them, uh, get this on the table, uh, decide to continue. Or not. And, and when I say or not, that, that also provides an option to continue. And to also continue monitoring the situation closely, uh, and, and if things change, uh, it would warrant a difference. Uh, in, uh, continuing with this process, so it, it's, it's not a yes, no, it's a yes, no and. Uh, steady as she goes and watch carefully, so.
I would like to, I like, are you okay with this? Are you comfortable with the way that it's going? I mean, you are would be the most knowledgeable in this situation.
Um, I'm definitely comfortable with the, uh, with the effluent, the, uh, which is the water leaving the plant, every, it, it's. Uh, operationally, yeah, there, there are challenges. Um, I don't like, uh. Brand new plant and there's, uh, you know, we got grease spots now and, and so it, it's, you know. That, that, that's more cosmetic than anything to me. Um, I know that my guys really don't like dipping the, dipping the fat out of the. Off the, the top of the, uh.
Roughly how much of that are we kind of recovering? I mean, you, the numbers gone down a little bit?
We have a, uh, we, we have just some, some Rubbermaid totes and that's what we use. And, um. I, I, I wasn't down there today, but I don't think any got dipped out today, but, uh, there is, we, we got about half a tote there. I don't know, I didn't look in the dumpster, so I, I, I haven't, I, I've been busy doing other stuff, but, uh. Actually, I can ask for Dylan, how much, uh, did you dip out this week? Is that, is that the tote that's still sitting up on the deck? So there's half this week, half of the, half of a Rubbermaid tote.
And that was from, there was a significant amount earlier when they had more trucks.
Exactly, yeah.
Do we, do we think that we will continue to see or is there any, is there things we can do to improve that, uh?
Uncertainty?
Well, not necessarily, well, uncertainty is one thing, but, uh, just are there things we could do to re- reduce, uh? Are there changes we're gonna make to make that number go down more, I guess is what I'm trying to ask, I, I don't.
Uh, oh, yeah, the, um, you know, if we just left it in there, the bacteria's gonna take care of it, it's kinda trapped. It's just, it doesn't look good, you know, it's, it's a bunch of little balls floating around the plant and I, I don't like. Uh, you know, I, I don't like anything floating up on top of the plant, so, uh, we're, we're dipping it out, but. We do have the mechanism in there to, to remove it, so, no, I, I don't think we'll be able to decrease that. Um, you know, because, because I, I need it to be perfect, so.
George, are you testing it, the sludge before you sent it to Eagle Ridge, is that what you said?
Yes. Am I tested, the, the only thing we tested for is moisture content. We did a, um, a full run on it. Um, before we started sending it to them and they have not required another, um. Uh, uh, another sample to be run and I'm not gonna ask, 'cause it's almost three thousand dollars to run the tests that they want.
Who pays for those when they request?
Uh.
Three thousand dollars is cheaper than a fine if we're sending something down that they don't like.
No, but it goes on there as soon as they pick it up, it's on their MPDES permit. So it's no longer Monroe City's, it is theirs as soon as they pick it up. 'Cause they have an MPDES permit, that's why they had us test it so they could make sure it would, it would, it would work, but there's, there, there's nothing. Additional, the, what, what they use it for is they, they're using it for alternative, alternative cover. They have to cover up the trash every night, so we send them our mud and they put it on top of the trash to seal the top of the landfill every night.
What about testing that, the sludge for, uh, fat content, what percentage of that content that it contains, are they worried about that?
I don't know, I'm, I'm not worried about it and talking with Barbie, she wasn't, you know, I, she said, can you see any? I said, well, I see maybe some little specks, it's no more than we used to have. So I, I'm not seeing. 'Cause again, almost everything we're dealing with, it floats, it doesn't get down into the, the, you know, the, the actual. You know, sludge.
'Cause you're basically separating the, the fats buoyant on the water.
Exactly, yeah.
Sludge, sludge.
Does it have a smell this summer when it gets hot?
Um, not from this, but, uh, yeah, the, the, uh. Oh, the, uh, overflow basin is, uh, giving a smell to it, but it, it's sitting there going septic. And there's, uh, it, it's, it's where all of our grit goes and then sooner or later, we're gonna have to get in there and I, I talked to Rodney about maybe getting in there. With the front end loader and pushing it up to one side where it could dry and then we could start decanting water off. Right now, if I try to decant, I'm pulling that back into the plant and I can't have it.
Let's get back on track, please. Um, I would encourage us to schedule a field trip with members of the Public Works Committee. To go to the wastewater breach facility and, uh, take a review. Uh, of the area that we're utilizing to, uh, trans- transport. And or input this material into the wastewater breach facility and report back to this board, whether in your opinion or not, our best interest to continue. Would that be fair, fair to do or do you have something else you'd like to add?
Well, I was gonna ask, didn't you mention that Dan's is gonna, is gonna stop taking the fat, that we're gonna have to get a different container for it?
Uh, possibly, yes, actually, I was talking through Barbie. But if we're only putting half a tote a week, that's.
Then they'd be excited.
Yeah, that, that, that's nothing, we could throw that in a garbage bag and, and be fine.
I would think that, I guess my opinion is if you're the expert, you make the suggestion, we're like, micromanaging this thing in my opinion, like, you.
Well, I, you know, George, um, bought this to my office. As a, uh, potential additional source of revenue, uh, for the sewer department. And, um. It, uh, we're gonna have a continuing expense each month for the, the bacteria slash enzyme. Uh, there may be an additional cost, uh, associated with, uh, maybe, uh, increased number. Uh, of these, I call them dumpsters, it's probably not the right terminology.
That's what it is.
We, we really have to look at, at, uh, we'll also have to look at, uh, the condition, uh. Of the facility and what this is doing to it. There, uh, there's always that, uh. Law of unintended consequences where, uh, initially it's made seem like a wonderful thing and. Reality over time, it may in fact turn out not to be, and, uh, I'm certainly, uh. Have listened to, uh, Mike's comments that he and I've had, uh, together and that's one reason we put this together. Uh, Mike's concerns from his, uh, business down there, uh, it's your all, it's your, it's the board's decision to make, not mine. How we proceed in the future, but I think we need to be cautious. Yes, Sid?
I'm, I'm on the Public Works Committee, I mean, we discussed it quite a bit at, at our last meeting and we talked about touring and it's a great idea. To do that, our next meeting is April tenth, if you'd allow us to put that on our agenda and discuss it further. And then maybe we can make a recommendation to the Board of Water Parliament for their second meeting in April.
Uh, I mean, that sounds like a good idea to be, would you be available for that?
Yeah, absolutely, just, uh, just change the location of the meeting on the, uh, on the post to the wastewater plant. So any public that wants to attend the Public Works Committee meeting also, should meet down there and we can just meet in the lab afterwards.
Wouldn't we wanna have it before dark?
It'll be before dark if we start at six.
Yeah, I'd say it would get, well, I mean, it's.
I mean, yeah.
It's about seven thirty now, something like that.
Yeah, we'll have plenty of time.
Okay.
One last thing, uh, this question came up, I'm not gonna drag this out any further, can you change? Uh, can you change the security system on the entrance gate and give precision, their own separate codes? So we can monitor how often they come in and come out?
I don't know that we can monitor the, the, the codes that are pumped, I, I, I don't know if we can see.
I bet there's a law.
I, I don't know, I, yeah, I mean, sure, I, I guess.
Mike, if it's not too much to ask, could you work with George, see if that can be happened, if that can happen? Fair enough, okay, anything else?
Be easier than having the review video.
I agree, well, yeah, I agree. Anything else from water, George?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next thing we have is gas department.
Okay, I got bids for the side by side.
Let's hear them.
This is the government surplus, or not surplus, government bid contracts for, uh, rural cycles. You might have them in your bag. Anyway, for the Polaris Ranger, it's twenty seven thousand fifty nine dollars. For the government bid.
That's a Honda.
From John Deere, from the side of the circus, it was twenty seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. From Quincy Smith Brothers Honda, it was twenty six thousand five hundred and eighty three dollars and eighty cents. And from John A. Haynes or Meyer Implement, twenty one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. He gave us a five thousand dollar discount.
What, what was the first one, uh, you announced the Ranger? I just tried to remind, I was writing down what you.
You want the very first one?
Yeah, uh, she's got it, twenty seven.
Twenty seven thousand.
Okay, so, so twenty seven for the Ranger, like twenty seven for the John Deere, twenty six for the Honda and twenty one for the Myers.
Yes.
That's Kubota, I guess, right?
Yep. Change like a pretty easy.
Uh, now it seems like there's significant price advantage, is there any reason that we should not use the Kubota?
Nope.
What's your budget?
You asked a question there.
Yeah, well, we had eighteen thousand in the budget for it, but we're not gonna buy the mid welder and we had six thousand in there for it. So if we could take some of the money from the mid welder, put it towards the Kubota, can't do that?
I didn't say you couldn't do that.
We were shit.
I was just curious why you had the, why you had the mid welder in there if you didn't need to begin with.
Well, we do need one, but not as bad as we do the Kubota.
Oh.
So we're sacrificing or compromising.
What do you wanna call it?
So I'm not gonna be getting a phone call that, hey Ronnie, we can't fix this, we go, we can't weld it.
He can use the rest of the money left over to rent one.
That's a good choice, I like that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. The Kubota from John, from, uh, Meyer Implement Company in the amount of twenty one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and it is the least. Cost bid, so across within the requirements for having three or more bids. Do we have a second?
I'll second there.
We have a motion second on the floor to spend twenty one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, the taxpayers' money. On a Kubota from Meyer Implement Company. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Got it.
Thank you. My knee thanked you, my back thanked you.
Okay, um. Sure.
Excuse me. Can we go out with that for a hundred gas meters?
Do that be the AMIs?
Yes, with the AMIs.
There's what?
Just a hundred. Like we're down, what, like thirty?
How many AMIs have we got installed yet?
Uh, we're down to thirty, we've probably got about a hundred and seventy.
I mean, how many are actually installed and?
Hundred and seventy, on gas.
On gas, yeah.
Yeah, electric's almost done except for three things, though.
So we, we have roughly a hundred and seventy installed.
Yeah.
Out of twelve hundred?
Yeah, you're looking at twelve hundred meters and not all of them are domestic. Some of them are big rotary. I'm not sure how they're gonna do that yet. They're gonna have to have some kind of an index that will turn their. Will turn with the gas meters that we have. Which we were more concerned about getting all the residential and the small commercial thing first.
What, is that in our package?
The meters?
The meters, no.
Our dealer's asking to go out for bids.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, uh. Well, I don't see reasons not to do that, so I, I make, I would, uh, let them go out for bids for the, uh, the AMI.
I agree with my meters, yeah.
We're limited on who we can bind on anyway, 'cause there's sales, there's certain ones just for this area. And we're already locked into divisions, so.
Do we need to actually vote for that?
Uh, no, I mean, we're seeking bids for something that we.
You can always reject it.
Right.
Okay, where are we, folks? I apologize. Rodney?
Well, I guess we already talked about the boat ramp, so that was on there.
They say it is. We need something to hit my car.
Oh, geez.
They say, they say he's okay.
Do you need a leak?
No, I'm fine. I don't know, a little scooter thing. Whoever hit him.
I'm listening.
I was just trying to figure out what to do with Rob Jags since we did close. Just let them go at their own risk.
I'm sorry.
Well, what happened was we didn't, we didn't pass any motion, we. And, uh, it felt.
That's good enough.
So.
I gotta call them.
You've got no direction.
It's a good one until we can figure something out better out.
All right. It's still in discussion.
The only thing I had is, I didn't have this in the budget, I, I just to let you know, we got about four or five trees. That we can't reach big ones, like with the shoemakers where he lived, the four boilers now. That are dead.
Yeah.
We need, I mean, it just.
Is that that one old battery or whatever, the parts that fill out? Stains. Stains, okay.
Can't live there, can't she make it up there?
I got four or five, but I was thinking if we could do one or two a year, I mean, that in there. Yes, it's out of reach for us, I mean.
So, uh, basically, you're, we're looking to get, it'd be a third, another contractor coming to take care of it.
Yeah, what I'd say is let the contractor come in and cut it, cut it down, we clean it up, you know, that saves.
Or we just top them?
At least get it down where I can handle it, thirty feet down, thirty feet, we can shove it over.
What about renting a bigger bucket?
Well, they've done that in the past. And that work had a little damage.
To the truck?
Yeah.
So I think that's not the best option, it sounds like you considered that, huh?
No, I have considered that, but I, I think it's kinda had a few little, oops. But at least get it down where we can cut it and push it over, it don't hit nothing, you know, a house especially.
Well, we got houses, electric lines, cars, whatever, I mean, they're, they're gonna fall eventually. Well, we got houses, electric lines, cars, whatever, I mean, they're, they're gonna fall eventually, and that's dangerous, so.
Right there, and, uh, like I said, I've got four or five, but I thought if nothing else, I could do a couple to get them out of the way. I mean, we've cut several trees, some of them right at our border, you know, I think we cut one just down from you the other day. And, you know, and Robbie cuts and he's real good and careful, but this is, this makes him nervous, so usually if you get an operator's nervous, back off.
So what do you need to, what do you want to do?
You need to go out to get contracted, at least bring it down to where it was a normal.
Probably thirty, forty feet, it's like, give it to me a bid to get it down, and we clean everything up.
They just do the cutting?
They just do the cutting, I mean, we got the equipment to move it.
Move it, yeah.
And cut the last thirty feet.
Yeah.
Long as he can reach it with the bucket, you know, and then the stub, he just kick over.
Yeah, I would say get some bids probably.
I can check. I know that they got bids a couple of years ago, but I'm sure all that's updated.
Yeah, and, and to your point, I mean, I don't know if there would be any, uh, what do you wanna say, uh? Well, any advantage to doing them, like, all of them at once, or whether, like, if we did three or four, so this one?
I think the last time they bid, if I remember, they had all the trees and they had every, whatever one of them cost to cut, which was handy.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's.
How much do they wait another year?
Yeah, 'cause I, if, if, you know, 'cause I.
And if I could request that, say, okay, I got, say, four trees, these are the first, the worst four. How much for this one? How much? I was trying to get one out the other day, Dr. Rice, but I didn't get it. Get it, give it a bid to give you all an option.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's what I got.
Okay, I, I think that makes sense, because they, they are, uh, and just confirm, these are trees in the city right away?
Oh, yeah. Wish it would.
Yeah.
That one you're talking about, I put a sign in my front yard. The one that you talked to the other day, I saw him out there, he dropped a sign in my front yard. Actually, he dropped a sign on the city property. Except the stop sign. In case you wanna contact me.
I got his card.
What about the porta potty?
Oh, oh, porta potty.
You said porta potty?
Yeah.
Luxury toilets.
Top top.
My understanding is every year they do porta potty bids for the parks, so we provide quotes for four porta potties for our parks and our hand washing stations. The first ones from Apollo porta potties, uh, the regular porta potty, the regular porta potties are a hundred and one per unit and four hand wash stations for two hundred dollars each. Uh, the handicap units, if needed, are two hundred each. Scotty's potty is one for the harder community, but it's eighty-five for each unit per day for twenty-eight days. Jared, forty dollars for twenty-eight days roughly for four units, and they're typically cheaper than Apollo, because they're closer.
Is that who you had last year?
It's eighty-five per month. Yeah.
It's not even per day.
He didn't say for the.
It does say per day, yeah.
Unit per day.
Eighty-five per twenty-eight days.
For twenty.
So eighty-five dollars a month. Yeah.
Okay, so who's the lowest bidder?
Scott, Scott.
They've been the provider in the past?
Yeah.
They've been a past provider with no complaints.
And we had, who did it last year? We didn't have any problems with that service. I'm making a motion then that we, uh, approved a little bid for Scotty's.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the bid for, uh, portable potties or from Scotty's. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion for, a motion and a second on the floor to approve the bid from Scotty's potties. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, anything here for the bid, sorry, building inspector? Airport.
I talked to y'all before about getting a plaque for the airport for Ben Smith, and I had reached out to his widow and his sister. And then Ronnie, the mayor, pointed out these, like here, in the museum and the cabinet, that explains everything about it. It was a congressional thing for him and then another thing. So I took those out to CW's and she engraved them on some eleven by sixteen metal plaques for seventy-five dollars. And I took them to the airport and I mounted them on the wall.
They look good. I encourage everyone to go out and take a look.
And, and it looks pretty good, and it'll give pilots, pilots come in, they wanna know who was Ben Smith, what did he do, so that's, we'll, we'll solve that. We're, I'm thinking about designating an area at the airport for a campground for, for, there's a thing called Recreational Aviation Association, and it's all over the country. And they have a guide out where places where pilots can land their airplane and then camp under the wing. Uh, if we go through them, they will, uh, furnish a fire pit, and then they want to sign, put a sign up that, you know, gives them some recognition. So I'd like permission to continue to pursue, pursue that if that's possible.
I think now you look into that and see, but.
What the details are on it, yeah.
Yeah. They withdraw people to town and then they can come, use the courtesy car, come uptown, visit the.
I know people who utilize that. Um, my daughter's got some family that they fly all over and they camp under their wings of their plane.
I mean, it's a pretty big thing for those type of people. I mean, most of the people wouldn't know anything about it, but those people do a lot of it. There's a lot of places in Arkansas where they have these campgrounds, so they're.
So do they attach the tent to the plane, or?
Yeah, they got a tent or something that comes under the wing of the plane, or they set a little tent under the wing of the plane.
Some of them have little pop tents there, or they do drape over the wing?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how is it gonna keep from blowing away?
Well, we, we got a beautiful grass strip out there. It's really awesome.
Oh, they park on the grass?
Yeah, park on the grass.
And, uh.
And the only thing that I would request from the city would be a picnic table, maybe.
Now, you mentioned something about, uh, going to the edge, uh, of the apron, uh, near, uh, the metal hangers. Uh, there's an area right there in the grass, it would be, uh, it would be on the east end, that you would want perhaps to go out there and put some gravel, and then we're gonna place the fire pit there?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is get the recommendation from the RAF.
Okay, okay.
How they set theirs up, how they would.
How they want, how they would like to have it set up?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Because we don't want a fire pit to get away and burn stuff up, things like that.
Correct, correct. No, I think that's great. Well, you've got approval from, uh, at least a tactical approval from many of the board members. Go ahead and proceed. I'd suggest you do it.
All right, um, we have, uh, we're reaching out for bids for fuel. Right now we have about four thousand gallons, but we're twenty-five cents a gallon higher than Hannibal or Macon or anywhere else close to it. So we're not getting.
We're higher?
We're twenty-five cents a gallon higher. So we bought fuel way last summer when the price was high.
Of course.
The price is starting to come down.
We want you to pick the low prices.
So, and it may go lower, you know, they're talking like it might, so, but if we could buy four thousand gallons, mix it with the four thousand one gallons we have, then prorate the price out where we can lower the price some. And still be making around seventy cents a gallon for what we're, what we're making now, over the cost. Um, so anyway, I'm, I'm pursuing, asking for.
When, when's the last time we purchased fuel? What date? Do you remember?
It's been a while.
It was right before Oshkosh.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was right at Oshkosh, right at the end of July.
Okay, so what month? Do you remember when that was?
The end of July.
So it was last year's budget?
Yeah.
It was last year, we got the fifteen thousand dollars and this year's budget to purchase fuel.
And you should have the money because you're.
See, there's forty-eight or two. I can't remember which one.
I mean, the money should be coming back in. Every time we sell fuel, it comes back to the city, so it's not really.
Right.
I mean.
So you wanna buy.
Motion that you go ahead and buy four thousand gallons of fuel?
All right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pursue the prices first and then see, see what, uh, what we can come up with, and then I'll come back to you.
How, how large, is that what the truckload is, this four thousand? Is that what, how do you use it?
Eight thousand. We usually, we wait till we get down to where we can haul eight thousand.
Because then you just want truck.
We can get one load, we can get it cheaper. If we get four thousand, we have to find somebody to split it with.
Which committee does the airport call?
Another airport?
Excuse me?
And we've done that before, haven't we?
We have.
Who's the park chairman?
What?
Who's the chairman of Parks Board?
Not, not from this board, but I, I'm on the board, but we are chairman is, our chairwoman, uh, is, uh.
Penny?
Yeah.
Okay, which alderman is on? You're the only alderman?
Yes.
Okay, when you get your, uh, uh, information put together, contact Mr. Smith and he will approve it or not.
Okay, you're talking about for the.
Fuel.
For the fuel, okay.
Because that falls under Parks and Recreation. He's the only voting alderman on that board, so he would be the person you would contact for approval.
And the last thing is, uh, uh, Rodney brought the roller out, this small roller that they use on the streets, and I rode the grass runway with it two or three times and got it down nice and. Got all the extra trucks from vehicles driving over it, out of it, and, uh, we've got it in pretty good shape for the summer, hopefully it'll stay that way. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Dell. Appreciate all your effort, buddy.
We do have the RFQ out for engineering services, too.
Yeah, we sent that out. Oh, and by the way, uh, he charged seventy-five dollars for the plaque to us out there on my authority, so we owe him seventy-five bucks.
If, um, if you can't afford it, I'll do it.
If they can't afford it, I'll pay for it.
That's a proud achievement.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, uh, I can show you something here from Mosswood Pool. Nothing here, right? Okay. Uh, last thing is presentation of bills. Oh, presentation of bills and approval of payments.
On this Hartland.
Well.
Hartland Environmental. It says transfer. It's the bacteria, it was what was on that breakdown. Just had notice of transfer.
Oh, I was sorry.
Okay. So on this Meridian, the waste throw up for nine eighty-four, is that, is that the sludge?
Yes.
That's not one I've seen. I went back several months and didn't see that before. Is that something that you normally pay?
That's something that I've never seen in the last couple of months.
We've been gotten.
Yeah, they, they're not real good at billing.
Oh, so this could be for a center roll.
Yeah, I don't know. They send it to me and I just, I don't even look at it, I just send it down.
So that's why we, okay, that makes sense, so. JAG Services, this is where my question is. The JAG Services?
Yeah, that's Drug Task Force.
I wish for their task force annual donation. I don't know what the JAG means.
I don't think that's often done, because that's how they have it described.
Chief, is this northeast?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. How do they distribute those funds? How is that? Is that in your budget?
Yes.
Can we do that once a year?
Yes.
What does that get us?
Uh, that gets us the task force to come in and help with search warrants here in town, collecting and selling information to your other teams.
Good question. How many areas do they cover? Like, how large is their area?
Uh, they cover. Crown Royal. Silver, please, Spartans, uh, and quite a few towns. I believe they go up, Spartans is Canton, Lewis County, uh, Hoover and Shelby, and Mason. Rawls.
And, and, and I'm just trying to like, you know, while we're talking about it, is, uh, I guess what kind of, are they like a, uh? Are they like an LLC? Or how's it operated as a, or is it like a state, is it a state deal or a?
So they, they are funded, uh, through the state to an extent, uh, and that is where they get the ability to be drug task force. And then they come into these jurisdictions, we have to, uh, essentially have them sworn and have them available to make arrests in our county and in our jurisdiction. And then they can collect any and all intel in those areas, or sorry, in our area, plus all of the other areas that they.
That they have.
They collaborate all of that, and that's how we're able to get some of the biggest others, bigger, uh, pushers of narcotics out of, out of our areas.
Because they cover like joint community.
So where the majority of what we can get is gonna be, you know, most of your users in small time, you know, might sell to a few of their neighbors, a few of their friends here in town. So we traditionally get into these guys by using information that they collect, they're able to get the ones that are pushing out to several communities. Uh, and streaming it to the sellers in those towns.
How, how do they distribute, like, the cost out? Like, we see this charge here for us, is that based on?
Uh, so that's, uh, the biggest part of that is based off of population, uh, and area. So like Marion County, they, they pay larger account due to amount of area that they're having.
Big area, yeah.
Geographic. So, yeah, it, it all comes down essentially to, uh, the amount of work that it's gonna require in that specific area. Which comes down to population and size.
That's, that's all I have.
Okay. My list has anything on this?
I do, I do. Is, is it fair to say that they, they also participate in other enforcement activities besides just narcotics?
Yes, yes, they do.
You spend sixty seconds talking about it.
Yep, they have helped us multiple times on, uh, anything involving guns, stolen items, there, you get a lot further away than what we are, so. We have, uh, big tech going on, they can go all the way up to Lewis County to help us get leads and information, talk people to figure that out. Uh, help us on domestics whenever they're around. So, I mean, uh, most of our search warrants, they are, they're here for regardless whether it's drug related or not. So they do delve into a lot of different stuff, but the, the drugs is their primary.
I think, you know, I, I'm, I'm glad you did that. I think it's, you know, it's, we don't do what you do. And, and so, you know, we can, I know I personally look at things through a different lens than, than you do. And it's helpful to, to have a, 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 a better of a idea of the big picture. Thank you very much for sharing that with us.
Thanks.
So, we have before us a requirement to either approve or not approve the bill's payable. What say you?
I'm making a motion to approve bills payable.
We have a motion on the floor to approve bills payable. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion second on the floor to approve bills payable. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Well, where are we tonight? Unfinished business. Okay, is this the time we continue talking about the healthcare, or because it is contractual in nature, I wish our city attorney was here. What do you think? Let's do it. Okay, you guys have had a chance to go back and obviously do some preparation.
Sir, uh, so what we, uh, what we did is took that one thousand gold plan off of that proposal, um, that you guys already have, it's that RLO proposal. And we got the one thousand plan design broken out, Jeff, with the rates compared to what you guys currently have with Excel Health Plans. Uh, and what we found was this is a richer plan, right? If we take the deductible, we're offering a one thousand dollar, two thousand per family, and then it has the three thousand maximum out of pocket, but. That benefit kicks in a lot earlier for those employees, so they hit a thousand dollars. and then it has the three thousand maximum out of pocket, but that benefit kicks in a lot earlier for those employees, so they hit a thousand dollars. Insurance starts paying eighty percent on that until they hit three thousand dollars. Uh, that's the maximum out of pocket, and then it also knocked those co-pays down just a little bit, we were at twenty-five before on that primary care office co-pay, that goes down to fifteen, specialist visits forty, uh, urgent care is going to be a fifty-five dollar co-pay, so the primary care and specialist went down from where it was at on the Excel Plan. Uh, the co-pay structure on the prescription benefit is the exact same though, they don't have a different stack. So it's the five for generic, uh, tier two is brand preferred, that's thirty-five, and then seventy-five for brand non-preferred, and then same thing, two fifty for the, the high-cost specialty drugs.
Okay, so your employee and spouse is basically double what the employee would be, uh, your employee with, what, of the four children, is that how that works?
So that's employee with unlimited children, that's just the enrollments next to him, so we have, if you look at the EE, we have fourteen employees only, and then that's employee child tier, we have four people that have their children covered on their plan, it could be one kid or ten kids, it doesn't matter, it's the same rate.
And then he has his employee spouse and he's still there?
That'd be co-pay.
That's full payment, and we have one of those, those get there.
One, one side note too is, you can offer dual option, right, so if you wanted to option, offer the three thousand, six thousand for costs so that it wasn't so much premium going in, and then offer that one thousand dollar hold for the buy-up, that, that is an option as well.
I would suggest that we look at that, I mean, for, just related, personally, we have my employer, two or three different options laid out, you know, instead of just all of this, so that maybe if the employee wants to choose a higher deductible and a lower premium or whatever. No, the premium doesn't change for the employ, employee, does it?
Well, it can, depending on the options you have, I don't know how ours will work exactly, but, but I mean, as you're aware, as a, you know, as, in our, as a way, the premium will change depending on what service you pick.
So my recommendation would be, currently you're contributing, if my math is correct, seven twenty-seven, twenty-five, right? Per paycheck, or per month for each individual's coverage. If you wanted to continue that, uh, then this new three thousand dollar plan would be approximately sixty bucks per month, and then to buy up to the one thousand dollar deductible, it'd be approximately a hundred and twenty dollars and forty-two cents per month. Still within affordability, um, and then you do twenty-four annual paychecks, is that right, buy semi-monthly, two times per month? So it's sixty bucks a paycheck for a thousand dollar deductible, still pretty strong.
So they could have the option of the thousand or something different.
Or the three cents that we talked about first. Yeah.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah, can the Alderman be employed?
Yeah.
I want this insurance.
You know, I think, I think affordability, uh, the affordability, from my perspective, uh, the affordability was there with the Excel Health Plan. We had a three thousand dollar, uh, we had a three nine, uh, the first go-around was three six, they'd come back with one, two, what'd you say the option would be?
So, it would be the, this plan, the one thousand, three thousand that we're looking at, the page we just gave you, and then the page that we had initially brought, the three thousand, six thousand? That would be the base plan, this one thousand, three thousand would be the buy-up.
Okay, so this would be your ba- base, and this would be an option they could choose.
I guess.
Danette, you okay with that?
I mean, it, it's, it's up to you all.
Well, no, what's gonna hap- what's gonna happen, what's gonna happen is, um, we're going to have to look at increasing, uh, the employee portion. Okay, the, the, whatever the percent is now, not only do we look at changing that slightly higher, but it also, as a percentage of the total, you can't change from what it was, does that make sense? How did you all determine what the employee portion was?
That, that's been done, sure, that, yeah, that was before the year.
Can I?
Yes.
Can I, uh, so, typically, when I see thirty-five dollars as the employee's contribution, it's just a flat dollar amount. So the employer can choose to contribute a percentage, a dollar amount, as long as you're, uh, managing the affordability clause, which comes into effect with your sixty fifty-five and sixty fifty-six reporting at the end of the year, which is your ten ninety-fives, uh, you just have to make sure that you're paying X amount of the employee's premium, this is compliant.
Well, and, yeah.
Someone's gonna have to explain that one.
Right, no, he was just talking about like the tax reporting at the end of the year for these plans and how they have to be affordable, um, are we over fifty full-time employees, then yeah, I mean, it's in, it's in compliance, then yeah.
Yeah.
If you, once you get over fifty employees, you have to pay ninety-two percent of that premium.
I looked, yeah, I, I.
But.
And that's not a.
But I guess back to the, I guess that would be something I'd be interested in seeing, is like, even though we're not required to comply with that number, we're, we're at exactly. I know based on thirty-five dollars and, and the seven hundred number, way above that right now, you are, uh, but maybe that number would change with some of these other.
I would say that we're not going to change it like that now, I mean, we currently have, we just need to decide which one of these plans. I, I guess I would assume that, so we currently, we made a seven sixty-two to seven ninety-six, so we're gonna have thirty more bucks a month.
Correct.
Right, per, roughly per employee, that our cost is gonna go up, we're not gonna probably change that to the employee. But if the employee wants to buy a better plan, then they can buy up for.
You're gonna have to pay up.
Yes, we're not gonna pay that.
Right, they can pay the difference.
We offer this for thirty-five dollars a month, but if you want a little better, you can pay forty dollars extra a month added to your thirty-five dollars.
You could probably more than that, because.
Well, whatever, I might say the number wrong.
I'm just thinking that you're gonna increase the city's cost, what I was trying to find, these guys do is come back with something that was very helpful for people, uh, that didn't require them to have, uh, significantly high, uh, maximum out-of-pocket cost. Because, uh, six thousand dollars for some people, uh, might be a problem. If you have to, if you have to do that.
Especially if you gotta make that deductible again.
Yes. And just to remember, just a couple reminders to me, I guess, these numbers you got, those are monthly numbers, right?
Those are monthly totals, this is that three thousand, six thousand, I give you one of these.
Yes.
Oh, okay, you got it.
Three thousand, that's not, that's okay, but it's not wonderful.
Okay, so, uh, we would be looking at fifty dollar per employee increase if we just wanted to add an extra spend.
For insurance, the way it changes, it's looking like that right now.
Would they all like it, I don't know, I still think you ought to give them an option, this one or this one.
Well, but, why would you not choose this one for the same price, well, again, what you're, guess what you're saying is we're, we're at this plan, we're making their insurance a little worse.
Well, and so, I think, um, there might be some confusion, so, you guys can contribute, so it's just thirty-five dollars for the plan they're on now, right? Um, and so, you guys are paying seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents per employee per month. I, if, you guys could keep that the same between the two plans, and just say, hey, it doesn't matter what plan you take, we're gonna pay seven hundred and thirty-two dollars towards that, not a percentage, and then if the employee wants the base plan, they can do it for thirty-five, and if they want the buy-up, they can share in the cost a little bit more and pay the one twenty.
But that way, the, the city keeps the contribution, you've already saved.
They get to decide how much they're willing to risk having a deductible of three thousand, uh, or, or, uh, if they think they're gonna have high deductibles or a lot of healthcare, they might choose to pay the extra for the premium, is that what you're saying?
That's exactly, that's exactly right, it's, and so their thirty-five dollars may go up, so what is the difference?
And we help them, we help them with that calculation.
So, in other words, we, uh, just using the, the, uh, single employee only, the EE fourteen, uh, of that seven ninety-six, they're gonna pay what?
So yeah, so, currently, so do we wanna keep it current, because if so, I need that number, the free, the Excel Health Plans number that we currently budgeted for minus.
Sixty-two, twenty-five.
Seven sixty-two, twenty-five, minus thirty-five dollars that the employee pays, you're currently contributing seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents for everybody's health insurance.
Okay, that's gonna go up.
No.
No, you can keep that flat, okay, so you're, no matter which plan the employee chooses.
This is a monthly charge, right?
Uh, that's the monthly contribution from the city of Monroe City.
So, uh, so what you're saying is, if we keep that the same, for this plan to be sixty-nine, seventy-one, does that sound right?
What was that, sorry?
It'd be sixty-nine, seventy-one per month, difference?
Correct.
Well, in other word, I'm not gonna use the word difference.
Correct.
Uh, they're paying thirty-five now.
Yep.
Uh.
It goes up thirty-four, so if you kept the same contribution.
With the, uh, three thousand, six thousand, our cost would stay the same, their monthly cost would be sixty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Okay, so if we go to this one, it's gonna be eight forty-seven point sixty-seven. Oh boy, you've already done this, I realize, I've, I gotta do it again for me.
Be one twenty.
Yeah, one twenty a month, sixty dollars for paycheck, that's, that guy, that, that is very inexpensive healthcare.
That is cheap.
It is very expensive, but you have to remember too, basically, they're paying thirty-five dollars now, look at their maximum out-of pockets because we're, I'm gonna ask them to pay more for less insurance.
That's right, met, less insurance.
Than they currently are paying right now, correct?
See, that's.
So, yes, yes, no, that's right, because it's going from a three, three to a three six, eighty twenty versus three, three to a hundred.
I'm just wondering, do we want to, because we're changing their insurance because of this situation, I'm just asking, do we want to increase our, not make them pay anymore, thirty-five dollars, we would have to absorb.
For the base one.
For the base, so instead of the base being what it currently is here, we make this one, I don't know, I'm asking Mr. Budget Man, if we want to do that or not.
It, according to their numbers, it would be a difference of four thousand dollars a year for us, if we did that.
That's, that's sustainable.
That's what I'm saying, like, because we're making this change.
It wouldn't hurt as bad.
It wouldn't, it would cost us four thousand dollars for them to maintain the same type of contribution.
Or in this case, it would be two thousand for this budget year.
Correct.
You can calculate through, uh, the, uh, do you have any idea how long it's been since the, how, that the employee premium has changed? Like, do you have any idea how long it's been since the employee premium's changed?
I, I don't know. I would, I would suggest that we've probably come budget time, and here we need to.
It's changed twice since you've been here. Yeah, I'm sure it went up both times, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
If I could just chime in really quick, when we went through our renewal period this year, we were at eight twenty-five, and we had a two-card system, and we were with United Healthcare and Freedom Claims, and it was really clunky.
I can say this one was a lot better, but apparently they couldn't afford it.
Right, no, a hundred percent, this one is a lot better, uh, unfortunate with what happened, like I said, we've never seen that before, and, and, and our agency's been doing this for thirty years, so, um, honestly, I think, yeah, if we, if we move that deduction for the base plan to go to the thirty-five, what was the, the total on that was, uh?
Someone explain the co-insurance.
I got it. Oh, you've got it? You wrote it.
Co-insurance?
Yeah.
Uh, that's, if you go to the, or I don't know if you guys want to speak, but basically, you know, if you go to the hospital and emergency room, they charge you five hundred dollars, with co-insurance, you have to pay twenty percent of that out of your pocket, so that would be one hundred dollars.
Until you reach your max.
Until you reach your deductible, and then after deduct, or wait, no, no, the deductible's the first, until you reach your out-of-pocket, yeah, that's right. Cause the deductible's the first. Cause the first time you go to the emergency room and it's five hundred dollars, it's all out of your pocket, because that's your deductible. But until you fill your deductible up, then the full insurance kicks in until you get to maximum out-of-pocket.
Basically, if they want to reduce their total out-of-pocket cost, they will pay for the better coverage.
Mm-hmm, it, it, yes, but if they're young and healthy, if they're not gonna have claims, then they're gonna save money by not paying in premium, cause your premium's guaranteed gone, taking the higher liability, that's potential, you may not have any claims, you may spend zero on your six thousand dollar max out-of-pocket.
I would suggest that we.
Speaking of that, and I'm, sorry, we'll probably discuss more this, budget plans, but I know most places now are pushing more like high deductible plans, where you.
Yeah, and build a HSA.
I don't know if that makes any, I don't know if that makes any sense at all for us.
Well, we do have the FSA here, we do have the FSA here, and you guys fund that generously for the employees, so.
And we were doing before, right before we came into this plan, we were purchasing a high deductible through United Healthcare, and then when we're funding what's called a medical expense reimbursement plan, so you would fund money to a third-party administrator known as Freedom Claims, they had a secondary card.
That was another card that you used.
Yes, and the only way the money came out of that account was when employees had claims. Each person was limited to a seven thousand dollar max out-of-pocket, it was essentially buying reinsurance from a BUCO. So that was a strategy we were doing in the past.
And I'm sorry to have to drag this out, but this is complicated.
We don't.
But, and I was like.
Do you even wanna mess with an option?
I, I would, I would, I would say, I know you're gonna say, make this be, this, this plan here, the, the one, the first one they came to, be, we don't increase, yes, the base plan, we're gonna increase, the city's going to have costs of four thousand dollars.
Also gonna cost them a little bit less insurance, because that's the way things work out.
Yeah, I mean, but nothing's gonna, they're basically gonna maintain about the same coverage that they currently get. And then give them an option, if they want to buy up and give them a lower deductible, then they get to pay the difference, and that's what this one is. And they can take it early, that doesn't matter.
Yes.
Is that something you think would be?
That's exactly right.
So, it's, it's if you're a single person, you agree they're gonna pay thirty-five, or you're gonna pay sixty-nine, seventy-one?
Correct, you have these two options, you can get this one for thirty-five dollars, it's very comparable to what they currently have, right? Very comparable, maximum out-of-pocket.
It's, it's comparable, actually, deductibles, we have.
Can we manage, we've got what, nineteen people, we can manage it, right?
Yeah. I mean, you probably need to say that what you got now was like, actually not realistic.
Take care of her, take care of her.
I mean, it was great, but you know.
Okay.
They just plan, they'll never pay out of her.
Yeah, that plan does work really well, it's literally just the reinsurance carrier, and, and so that, we've got that installed with tons of groups in Missouri, and it works just fine, but it's quick, right, point of the stop-loss carrier, not stone amount of risk, so, um.
Is there an op, I mean, and I, and maybe I, sorry, I know it's already late, but for this.
I mean, we're not done yet.
So, wh- where are you guys at in this whole party, you guys are.
We went out, we went out and fought, uh, sourced the plan, right, we, we are brokers, consultants.
So you're brokers, basically, that work between us and these insurance carriers, right?
Correct.
That got these different plans, and so, who we had switched to earlier this year, or last bunch of deals, Excel.
Excel.
And they were kind of the primary, and then this other one where the reinsurance, like, once it goes over a certain point, this other company is supposed to step in and make these payment plans.
Once you've spent more than your monthly premium on claims, so just say, we're paying eighteen thousand dollars a month in premium, let's just use that as a rough number. One month, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in claims, well, our premiums don't cover that, but the reinsurance carrier does. We're just worried about paying our monthly premium, and that's all we have, there is no extra liability over and above that. Uh, however, that, that reinsurance carrier isn't paying.
And so, if they're not paying, then, then we risk that issue, we get stuck into where the other ones are, where, I mean, right now, we've been in good shape that our premiums haven't been higher, but as you said, one hospital visit changes that.
Yes.
Um, and, so, and if that happened, then we would be stuck in the same location where people aren't getting paid, because those guys aren't.
Correct.
You mentioned that you've had this same type of setup with other, like, a different company that they switched, that's not viable for this here?
So, so I did, so that's, this proposal right here, and it, it actually, it came in with last team, and what we're currently, we're playing with some of the same things. But it has those three specific deductibles, of those three.
Yes, I remember that.
Yeah, 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 so it's this page here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's been a lot of information.
Yeah, I, I read that, but those are the least.
That does, that does leave you.
I do, and it's not, John looked at this before we said.
Yeah, cause that, and that's my other concern is that, and, and you guys would, I assume be much more expert on any of this than I am, but I have issues of that, we did have a contract with these other people, and switching, where does that leave us, like, in a contract, and like, do we still owe some outstanding stuff even though they're not making the payments, and now we're stuck for two?
Can we approve the tentative based off of what John, based off of what John says and then formally releasing us from our contract? We haven't formally been released from a contract, um.
No, they're just not paying anything.
Right.
We don't, we don't, we don't release us.
Well, aren't, aren't they in default?
What was that?
Aren't they in default or something?
Yes.
They, they haven't lived up there into the contract.
Right, 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 but the litigation on that is gonna take so much longer than it could take for an employee to go to the hospital and get a bill, and that's right now.
Right.
And so, right now, that's where we're at, we wanna get a policy in place that will pay those claims out if they do occur, um.
Our risk is much higher if we do nothing.
Yes, I think we have to.
That's what the, that's the issue.
To do something, and then they can figure out, that, that situation is what it is, it's not gonna change whether, I mean, I guess if we negate our contract.
What can change is we have somebody get really, really sick and spend a million dollars.
I think we have, we make them have no insurance, in my opinion.
Is John aware of this at all?
He will be, tomorrow.
You think he's stopped his meeting? I just want him to be aware of it before we say.
Well, we can send him his letters or whatever, he can, he can go through.
He can look at it, I mean, we're not, you're proposing a four-one effective date, right?
Right.
So we have a couple days where he can look at it and do, like, whatever, I mean, I'm sure you what time they have.
Well, we, we still have to go through open enrollment with our employees.
There'd be a lot of stuff there.
Right, and I was, and I was tentatively set with, uh, Danette. Right, and I was, and I was tentatively set with, uh, Danette, I always said I'd be good to come out Monday, at, at the very earliest, so.
Share it between now and Monday.
I, I think, I think we ought to entertain a motion to uh accept uh the, uh, I'm gonna call it the three thousand, six thousand plan as the base with an option uh for the employees to choose the one thousand, two thousand deductible. I don't know what you call them.
And then just let John review.
Yeah, and that's the silver three thousand and the gold one thousand, so we've got that down as well. There is some contracting that we would need signed off on, is that something you guys are ready to do today?
No.
No? I just, well, that's what they were saying, they made motions, but they weren't ready to sign contracts, because John is the city attorney, he doesn't look over it.
Yeah, so you just wanted to let that.
Sorry, that was kind of, no, of course, no, a hundred percent.
Is it something that you can sign, like, via email or something, like, you might have to come back to sign it?
We can docu-sign it, I can send it, it doesn't. And then I can come pick it up when I do the opening.
But, but, when's our next meeting?
Well, but you can, why don't we make a motion to approve it per John?
I, I think we're gonna make a motion to approve it tentative on approval by the city attorney, and then if he says okay, you allow the mayor to sign the contract.
I completely agree with that, I think that, sorry, thank you for spitting it out there, that's why I did this, you did good.
I don't have enough money in my account to pay somebody's hospital bill, okay?
I don't either, I don't either.
Okay, so we've got about another twenty, thirty minutes after this.
What?
We do, we don't have a choice, I'll explain it then, not now. Okay, what we need is a motion on the floor to approve the uh Arlo Silver Plan and optional Gold Plan tentative to the approval of the city attorney. If the city attorney approves, you will authorize the mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with.
Arlo?
Arlo.
Yeah.
I make that motion.
Got a motion on, on the floor to accept the Silver Plan as our standard plan, provide the Gold Plan as an optional plan to have the mayor review the documentation and advise the mayor whether he may or may not sign the contract. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ooh, wow, I'm impressed, we have a motion and a second on the floor, I knew he was gonna wait forever to make that decision.
He waits for me, oh, okay, I wait for him, I, I like.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the uh Silver Arlo Plan as our standard plan, provide the option to our employees of uh moving to the Gold Plan. This information will be provided to the city's attorney, the city attorney will advise the mayor as to whether he may or may not enter into a contract with Arlo. All in favor, say aye.
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 I wanna vote no, but.
Okay, vote no. Vote no? Okay. The ayes have it. Okay, uh that takes care of the unfinished business, the next thing we have on our agenda is to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO six one oh point zero two one three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employee by public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to go into closed section pursuant to RSMO six one zero point zero two one three, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor and closed session pursuant to RSMO six one zero point zero two one three.
Do we need to not be live?
He cuts it. Right, you cut it off when you're filming.
No, but, but this part.
We have to film.
The voting to go into closed session.
Uh hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employee by government, public government body with personal information about the employee discussed or recorded by voice, vote.
Alvin Saunders?
Yes.
Alvin Osborne?
Yes.
Alvin Snyder?
Yes.
Alvin Smith?
Yes.
Alvin Quinn? Alvin Quinn.
Motion carrying, we're going to executive session at this time, you may take a few minutes of a break if you.